I'd like to welcome you to the first of what will, I hope, be many, informal meetings that we're going to offer. It occurred to us on the commission that many times when we have our commission meeting, people can sign up to speak. Unfortunately, we can't respond to the things that they speak about because under an open meetings act, we can't talk about things not on the agenda. So if something's brought up that's not on the agenda, we're not allowed to address it. We can listen to remarks, but we can't interact. This is your chance to be able to provide interaction between the commission, some of the city department heads, and you for any of the issues that you want to have. So it's a little bit different than a regular meeting. So let me go through a couple of the things that we're doing today. First, if you're here for the next year of wind farm, it's on the board. If you're here on purpose, well, if you went to next year and you want to be here anyway, welcome. So I just wanted to make sure that somebody wasn't a half-dollar in order to get around here and really want to be here. So this is your chance to make a break. Okay, what do we do tonight's corporate? First, I'll call the meeting in order. We have everyone with us tonight except all the other commissioners are here as well as any city staff. Introduction and an explanation of the point. No cards have been provided to allow public to ask questions or suggest a topic. If you'd like to be recognized, put your name on a card. The council will be able to respond to the topics or questions either by making decisions or votes you have during this meeting. Again, it's known in meetings act, we can exchange information, we can conduct business. But it does give us a chance to hear what you guys are thinking.
Mayor, if somebody needs cards, just raise your hand. Somebody at that one ring the call.
Yeah, if you need cards, please raise your hand. I have somebody at five right here. Couple more over here. Thank you. All right, we're going to have a couple of presentations. We're going to show one right at the beginning here that talks about census. It's a very short presentation, but census is very important. 1,000, I think the number is $1,675 per person per year when it comes to the city of Enid for every person counted. That's when you talk about federal programs, SNAP money, all the grants that might come from the federal proceeds for the city. But it's based on your population. So it's very important to get an answer and come. So you're going to be hearing a lot more about that. It's kind of goes down, but we have a short little G O F show there. We have a couple of other presentations, but I'm going to hold those off until we're done with our question and answer period. But they'll, they deal with what we call C-Quick Fix. And it's a way to be able to go online and report problems that you're having. So we'll show you how that system works. The other is a new, the new website, FewMeetings Online. So instead of TV station, what we're doing now is doing a lot of that stuff indirectly on everybody's cell phone. So it's a way to be able to get to it. So we're trying to go with technology there. So I guess we'll start with, we start with the discuss this census first.
Hey, Enid, we're counting on you. The 2020 census is more than a head count. It's our voice in Washington. The larger the population, the more representatives in Congress. It's funding for our community. Each person counted is an estimated $1,675 in federal funding every year for the next 10 years. What do you think Enid's population is? According to Population U.S. in 2014, Enid's population was 51,386, and estimated to rise to 54,550 in the year 2020. If we miss 1,000 people, that will cost Enid $16.7 million of funding that will go to our community, our fire department, our police department, our hospitals, our schools, our roads, and programs like medical assistance, WIC, Head Start, SNAP, and federal Pell Grants. The 2020 census begins April 1st and takes less than 15 minutes online. Regardless of immigration status, everyone counts. The 2020 census is confidential and by law cannot share your information with anyone, not the IRS, FBI, ICE, CIA, anyone. The 2020 census is our voice. Everyone counts. I count, you count. Count on us.
Good evening. I am Charlie Shatner with the Regional Development Alliance here in Enid. I'm also the Complete Count Chair for Garfield County for the upcoming census. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that video, that PSA. The census is very important to our city and to our state as it affects funding, as it affects redistricting, congressional seats, and as it affects business retention and expansion. So now that you've read this video, have you seen it, and you want to participate, there's just a little bit of how to be able to do that. Starting on March 12th, you'll be receiving postcards in the mail. That will give you your online code that you can go online this year. This is the first time that you're able to fill out the census online. You can either go online or go on the phone, and then later they'll be sending paper ballots. But April 1st is Census Day, and that means we want to know who's living in your household, whether their grandparents live there, it's a traditional family, a long dad and kids, or maybe it's aunt, uncle, or someone that's trying to stay there long-term. Anyone living in your house for the majority of time on April 1st, we want to make sure that they're counted here in Enid as they impact our funding for the next 10 years. And the quicker that we count and the more people that are counted by April 1st, the less people have to come around working for the U.S. Census Bureau knocking on doors. So we should encourage you to talk to your friends, talk to your families, maybe the people you work with, the people you go to church with. Encourage them with the office census to help maybe continue to grow Enid. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And you're really great talking about that. It's a very important project for all of us in the city and for our future. So please, please help us talk about it. We've got probably 25 people that sent things in advance that they wanted to talk about. Some are here tonight, some are not. So I think what we're going to do is use the note cards to make sure we'll respond to the people that are here tonight. So anyway, that's why the note cards are important. Moderator tonight is going to be Scott Morris. So he's going to kind of pick up one out of nine and kind of go from there. I will ask you that, as you can see, we have a full room tonight. A lot of people had a lot of things they'd like to talk about. So I'd like to ask for your help in making your point, receiving the feedback you need received, and then allowing us to move on to the next one so we can address other people's concerns as well. We're not going to call a confidential time limit now, but if it starts running too long on things, then the moderator will probably step in and ask us to go ahead and move along. If we have to stab us more, we need to stab us more, we probably won't be able to solve that here tonight anyway. So anyway, Scott, over to you.
Welcome to our town hall meeting. I'm Scott Morris, Assistant City Manager. And we are going to kick this meeting off. We're going to go ahead and call Ron Longo, that's what he wants to sign up and talk about, an issue that he has. And just as a reminder, we're going to try to put these questions into categories so we get to the end of the category. If you have a question, I may ask for a show of hands, and everyone will have a chance to speak.
I'm Ron Longo. I've lived here in Enid for over 40 years. I'm going to start off with a brief history of how this, how my predicament that I am in now has started and where we are at now. In 1992, we had complaints, we complained about our sidewalk needing repair. In 1998... I was told by the code office after taking pictures over my six-foot-six privacy fence and told to clean up my backyard and all my vehicles off. I had to haul off two 1968 VW Volkswagen's that I was restoring because I couldn't have them in a shed to work on it, or I couldn't work on them in a garage. I had to have them in a shed. The vehicles were moved that lost $5,000. On my court date that I appeared on, she told me that I removed them and I didn't need to appear for violation would be dropped. She told me that I could not work on a car or truck in my driveway or backyard and didn't have them without having them in a shed or garage. Again, we complained about our sidewalk. In 1999, I took an engineer plans of a 25-by-32 car garage to code for a permit. They told me that was too much rough area, and then she was not willing to approve it. Again, we complained about our sidewalk needing repair. In 2000, took another set of plans to get a permit for a 20-by-30 shed and was told that was too much water runoff and it was not approved. Again, we complained about our sidewalk needing repair. In 2004, we complained about the city sidewalk. Sorry, replaced the sidewalk to ADA standards. The city code told me that I didn't know how to work on a sidewalk, but it got done anyway. In 2008, I had enough being told no, so I started working on my building. In 2018, August, the city put in a water line in front of our home, then put in the driveway. They made it much smaller than it was. We called the city and they stated that it was up to code. They didn't care if it was smaller than the one before. If you can't get into the driveway, pull out into the other lane and pull and learn how to drive. How do you, we do have pictures showing this before and they started and after. We asked them to clean up the rocks and the grass that had been left behind, was told by the city. We will be back in spring to clean up the plant, grass, seeds, and level your yard. Well, we're still waiting. I went ahead and cleaned up the rocks and glass since no one came. Then we asked for the sidewalk that was cracked, and the city said they didn't do it. But we have pictures before and after they got through. Showed them to the city employee and they didn't, they didn't do it. The pictures show tracks from their machine that they broke the curb, but never fixed it either. If I was living in a different location, it would probably have been done correctly in the time of man. In 2019, my building arrived by truck after ordering it from a building manufacturer in October. They started putting it up, and man comes on my property and starts yelling at me to stop what I was doing and several times in a loud hateful voice. I asked why? He says I didn't have a permit, and if I didn't, I would be arrested, thrown in jail. My property would be seized and sold at the next tax auction, and then I would have to move. I said, this is, I said for building on my own property. He said now, or I would call the sheriff, and if I ask you who you are, he said code officer. And I didn't have a permit, so we stopped for lunch. After lunch, we started again. Another code officer shows up and told to stop, told to stop by telling us in a loud demanding voice to stop work. Took all my, the code office showed up again and told us to stop the work. He gave me the same hateful talk about how I was going to be arrested, thrown in jail, and I was going to end up moving. I took my paperwork down to the code office, no more than got in the door, and I was told I must be the man who wants a building that can't be built. I tried to get a permit and was denied. Went to the code office and talked with them, and they said that the location was five feet from the fence, and the blueprints were approved. Then I went to go through the variance committee. I spent $600 at an abstract office for the name of all the main property owners in a 300-foot area. Went to the town council meeting and told my story. And then the date was sent for the meeting at the city office. Went to the variance committee, and not one person shows up for or against the building. Variants board after one hour of talking, they denied my permit. I was asked to move if I wanted a building that size. I asked to re, I was asked to rezone commercial, and I was, and it was told commercial and would be for being that big. Even though there was a building behind me and one across the corner, they only allowed 650 square feet on one lot each, but I have two lots. It is only 750 square feet is all I can have now. I informed that I was unable to work in the heat and cold due to a medical deal. I was informed that, in my interpretation, that this was brought on by myself. I restore Volkswagen. I have a home-based business. My business has lost thousands of dollars since I've been able to put it in the building. At this time, I have not done one thing in my backyard for it might be against code of the city. Thank you for your time.
Was there a question? I mean, we're interested in hearing that, and there's...
Your code states, your code states that I can have 650 square foot building, 25 feet tall with a ridge of 35 feet max. I've got a 1,600 square foot building. It's only got a 20-foot. Now, if you multiply 650 times 650 times 25, you're going to find out that, goddamn, you're double or triple what I'm asking for. But I'm going to have two twin towers in my backyard. I'm 61 years old. I can't be climbing up and down steps and ladders and all of that in a two-story building or almost a two-and-a-half story building so that I can store all my stuff for my restoration, my tools, store my construction vehicles, store my one-ton, or my tractors in there to keep from vandals and just to keep them out of the weather. My welding machines, everything that I own, I'm being told no.
But let me start, what would you like from us? I mean, what, are you saying we should go, go rezonate the building or the building code?
Your variance, your codes don't make sense.
I agree with that.
You've got 650 square feet of sticking straight up in the air versus 1,600 square feet laying on the ground. Now, that don't make sense to me. And yet I have tried it, and I have tried to do it the city way, tried to do it legally. And now I have been told that I'm going to be arrested and thrown in jail for building on my own property. What's up with that? That is a civil rights violation. That is my constitutional right to build on my property within reason. I will grant that. But I have been denied and denied and denied by trying to do it legally. And I have been told to move three times by city employees. If I wouldn't building that big, move. Well, guess what? My house, my houses were built in 1936. They're almost 100 years old. How many live in here in houses that are almost 100 years old? All right? Who doesn't?
But I, and sure, I really don't interrupt you, and I'm interested in, and I think we're all interested in helping, and I was out. I apologize that city staff has been less than polite with you. That's really unfortunate. I'm sure we, we all get better, but, but again, there's...
Here's what I asked for when I went for all of this. I'm going to tear down my two buildings, the two houses that I live in. I'm going to build my wife her dream house on that lot, on those two lots. My deal was I build my shed, we take everything out of those two houses, and we put it in my shed. But we have a city ordinance that says I have to build the house first before I can build the shed. Now, I can't afford to take everything out of my houses and go put it in storage and pay for a storage deal when I can put them in my own shed and store and have them locked up and be safe while I'm building. So you have an ordinance that tells me I can't build a shed until I build my house. Then you have an ordinance that says I've got 650 square feet times two on both my lots sticking straight up in the air that I can put everything in, except I can't put my tractors, I can't put my one-ton because they're not going to fit. Because those ordinance are outdated. They're done for. You can park your car in it and work on anything. So my deal is, is we have outdated ordinances that need to be revised to where people like me can move on with our lives. But if you want me to move, that's fine. I'll pack up and I'll move, and then two houses will rot in their basements because that's what you want.
I think the bit that the, what we can do with that, it sounds like, at least from the perspective of what the city can actively do, we perhaps add more flexibility or some zoning work. Is that kind of the essence of what we're talking about?
I've been denied by your variance board. I've been denied by your code.
Do we have the code enforcement here? Is there anybody in that department here today?
Let me go ahead and address that quickly. It's a complex issue. I'll tell you that. There's many, many issues. Really what he's talking about is reviewing our accessory building ordinance. And perhaps the ordinance talks about on a vacant lot, you have to have a principal residence first. And I know Commissioner Norwood has asked us to bring this to a study session soon to discuss that. We have revised accessory building ordinance after, after instituting it, I think, at least once. And so we know, in fairness, a lot of difficult things have happened, and so I, Joe, you're the manager. So what I would say is, I don't know everything you were told. I'm sure you know you and I have had a long conversation about the accessory building issue. And I know there's other issues concerning with you and your wife. But tonight, what I think is, what I'm meaning from you is we need to review the accessory building ordinance and maybe other parts of the ordinance that may impact you and others. So that's what I'm getting at.
Right. You have ordinances on your board that are outdated. I mean, they're totally outdated. Like your driveway. Your cars, when your driveways were built in some of these neighborhoods, were made for the Model As and Model Ts. So you want to expand your deal. Well, you go before a board to say, well, hey, I need a bigger driveway. You have a commission that looks at it, and you have all that, and then you come up and say, well, we can't do that.
Mr. Longo, you're in my ward, and Commissioner asked me to look into it. I went by there the other day and looked at your house and looked at what you were doing in the back. And I understand your concern, but I think probably what we need to do is just get it to the study session and come down, get the right people and working with you, and try to come up with a solution.
That, that will be fine.
Mr. Longo, we, we don't want anyone to feel apprehensive or disinterested. We don't want you to feel fearful or any type of anxiety or, you know, about your future plan. And, you know, I know this council isn't in that type of business. We have a new council, and we're going to do things differently. So I can't make any guarantees, but I will let you know this. Change is coming, and it's going to be possible change because you all are customers. Without you all, the city of Enid will not survive. We need you. We're here to govern, but we're here to govern fairly. And I know about the situation, and others are learning about the situation. And it's our job to make sure that you are given and allowed your freedom to be able to do things that you enjoy. You know, we're not in the business to just say no. We're here to work with you before you're not against it. So I apologize before all of you all that you've been through these type of situations. But as leaders in this city government, it's our job to make sure that we at least hear you out. You know, we're not up here to make you feel like we don't know what you're talking about or we, you know, we don't understand what you're up against. I want you to know tonight, I assure you that we're going to go into study session, we're going to examine this, and we need, if we feel that it's been to make changes, we will make changes. We will make changes.
Let me add one thing. A few other people mentioned while you were talking that they also had issues with those ordinances with the... So what I'd like to do is invite you to get ahold of one of us. Email us and contact us however you want to contact us, but make sure that we know so that when the study session comes up, we have benefit of the information that you have and the issues that you want to resolve. Gerald, is there, I think you can go online and you see the ordinance, right?
Yes, absolutely. The code is online.
So if you go to the website...
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay. Well, from the others, then, they may also have issues. We don't know what to change. We don't know which rule is the issue, so...
It's not always entirely, it's not the easy degree because we have our ordinance in turn line. We've also adopted the national bill of code in some parts of the iteration. It is not, and it's not a simple thing. We've got really good staff, our co-official, Pinston over here, Gerald, he's an engineer. We've got really good folks who by far are going to have to explain things. You're not always going to get what you want. You will get those sometimes. There just are going to be things that will not get built, and that's...
I understand.
...the balancing of looking after everything that's... We're not going to change everything. We're not going to be developed under regulations. I would urge you and everyone else to please break the specific instances to the commission's attention and talk to staff because the way the ordinances and building codes are, they're just complicated. It takes more than just a passing familiarity, and so maybe there are some better solutions. But please do come back with us. That will be, will be good to me looking at the situation.
I will believe you. I stand up for my rights. I don't, I'm not a person to let my rights be trampled.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Longo. We did have one more speaker that decided to talk about code, so Mr. Jim Bridget, can you approach the microphone? And commissioners especially over there, we may need to take the mics out. People in the back can't hear unless we maybe pass the mics on. Thank you.
Well, you want to talk about city code. And just a short one after this on crime that we have over, pardon me, Ms. McDonald, I say it. Over on our side, we call it the East Side. You should call it the East Side. We call it the ghetto. Infrastructure sucks. There's a burnout house right beside us. It's a meth house. The trees have been drying up. I got, I talked to city code right up the bat, and they said 60 days. They've got to work on it or have it torn up. Okay, we're linked to a year and a half. Okay, about a year and a half. I called the city, city code, the lady up there. I started telling her I'm robbing, and she said, I am surprised with this attitude. I am surprised that you were the only one complaining about it. I was nervous, playing to the city right then and there, and spinning out the center. Okay, there are trees. There's nobody living there for the last, going on four years. They grew over my property. I couldn't even mow my lawn. I'm not much of a lawn because I have a driveway there, but I could even, got such trees that were drying up. So I called the city code, or she did, and the same lady, she says somebody out. GPS idols. Look down our history, said the tree's on your property. No. Nothing we knew. So I spent $935, which I like back in the old, to survey that tree was not on our property. Do you think I would have spent $935 if I had known it made no difference? The tree's on your property, that says there's no insurance, nobody there. It's my tree, my law. But I can't cut it down, like by law. You ought to see that tree right now. It's cut straight in half. Great, look, great, look, argument. I tried to keep our house and our yard up, and we get smacked now by the city code like that. It is not right. We are citizens. You know, I heard from Scott that it was going to cost like $4,000 to tear it down. Then I heard it there again. But I remember your work once one night at city code meeting house there, and he said, you're talking about that apartment in it. Oh, I think we can come up with $30,000. I was thinking it was $4,000 to tear that meth house down. Not only that, that morning, five minutes ago, dead baby. Does anybody know about that dead baby? Oh. Near in the paper, nobody knows, except I go into the city, home, building, and everybody there knew it. So the babies dead. That night, they torched it. They set it on fire. It took a year and a half for them to board windows. We still did it, but in front of my house. Four, one or many things, breaks, four. Now, I don't want to let you down, you know, technology now. But I'm sure that if they make a pass, a pass to pass, that's all we're going to get. Because you don't spend money over on our side. Potholes, we didn't get built, and we still don't have it. I mean, but the fact that you still have city code down, which I think drive by my house, I almost scared working there. You still have city code on us. But you don't give us the badly needed infrastructure we need. And alone, we got very poor police officers to take care of the crime we did. My wife and I are retired now. We had great plans of going to Lake and seeing our friends. And all this, and enjoying our retirement. We can't leave the house because we call the police. And they know. They took bottles at our driveway and it goes across the grass. We got to pick up a glass before we move it. We got a death threat, fine. Totally. And city, if you get a death threat, they got to draw up. My next question was, why did the all of them? You're going to take the bite to dinner that night? We're going to be somewhere in that incident where they didn't serve. You can't believe this every night. The police were in my house just the other night. Looking at, we, we had to get monitors. When they told us, "And the drug, what?" That's when the guns came in. Everybody in the neighborhood's got a gun. Now, fourteen year old was killed the other night from a guy chasing down the road because we're sick and tired of it. You're going to see it every morning that because spring and summer are coming. And it gets wild around our neighborhood. The drugs and the meth. And it's the day, I don't know why we are spending money for, let's take the art and let's take the aluminum airplanes and let's work on the real problems over there. On the, I'll judge you on the ghetto side. You know, that's what we call it. I was surprised at how many people were saying the same thing as I am. And just some, I, I talked, going to the city and I talked to them. They're going to take care of the tree. They cut off three branches. Now, mine, it was only one. Three branches, heavy, heavy, heavy. Took me to share a little bit like they were laughing at me. I was watching the cameras. They had a path just working on a yard and walked back into the garden and looking at me and I waited. Hey boss. Rude, but I got a little worried with Scott. And Scott didn't like it. I don't like it when city code is rude. Because someone told you that. And you all think really that city code has died to treat and talk to us like, like, get out people. Do you think that's right? And, and we tried to keep our place up. We tried to do the right thing. We didn't get all this done. Now, they say I get that. Yes, I do get that. And the biggest problem is a lot of times I don't know I am. I was two years in Vietnam. At that time, we, we got nobody to sue that makes effective earplugs. He didn't give us earplugs. I can't hear. A lot of times I don't, I'm talking loud, not screaming, but talking loud, and I don't even know. Because I can't even hear myself. And they say, "I'm on that plane, and I'm hot, and I'm a street." Is that enough to be rude to us also? They, "Don't turn around, we're rude to you all." Don't do that. Only to us. And I'm sure a bunch of these people right now have had the same experience. I know. I'm hearing that. You know, and what does she want to talk to us like that? What is it? Where are you sitting at? Where are you sitting in the code group? City code just like the mini Gestapo.
Let me stop you there, just. And I'm going to make the same request that I made with Mongol. Do you have a specific request for us? I, I, listen, I understand, we want to listen to folks then. But, but, but please, it's understand that city employees are just people too. Everything is bad there.
So you're, you're saying they have the right, right?
No, I understand they have the right. What I'm saying is that we should all give each other a little bit of slack.
There you go.
Because everyone is equal. Everyone is capable of having a bad day and being rude. So let's just understand that the city is not a monolithic robot. We are a big organization made up of folks who also have bad days sometimes and also make mistakes. We all do. So let me ask you, as, as elected officials up here, what specifically would you like us to do?
Well, number one, you all got to, got to spend more on the police department because we're a rotten, rotten town. Like I said, we can't even, we can't even enjoy our retirement because of this. But you don't.
Okay, well, let, let-
We, we got potholes that got to be filled. We cannot get a pothole filled for, I don't know, a couple of years. But a city councilman that is no longer with you got his potholes filled from almost pregnant age to end.
Okay, let me, let me, so I hear two things. Please, we have a system for recording potholes and, and I assure you, I assure you, every pothole that gets reported-
This is exactly what you, you have a law in here to, you have to protect the-
No, 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 and let me. We make mistakes and we spend a mofo of money on roads. Yeah, we would like more. But I do assure you, we spend an incredible amount of money fixing potholes. We spend an incredible amount of money policing the community. And we got the chief police back there who's happy to talk to you about these specific crime complaints. When you have a specific pothole, tell us. I, I, I complain to the city manager about potholes all the time. And I give him hell and he doesn't give a dick to it. But yes, you are absolutely right. We could always spend more money on safety. We've always spent more money on roads. We have finite resources. But I hear two concrete complaints, two concrete requests for us. One, you have some leasing issues in your neighborhood that I would love to make sure we address. Two, if there's a specific pothole, give us the, give us the location.
Don't worry about his burn down house next door.
Now, the burn down house is a separate issue that, you know, when we talk about property rights, somebody owns that property.
Yeah, but if it were my burn down house, the city would work out with me every single day. If I was on this person-
If I may, Mr. Bridget, that house next door, you know, there's a procedure if there, if there's a house that needs to be demolished or you must follow. And right now, it is currently in process. There's a hearing scheduled for that property owner to appear for the co official. It's scheduled about thirty days out. So in about thirty days-
This is the second one. They just put that up the other day. They, they haven't needed it. Okay, they said, they just put a notice up the other day. They said, because we're going to give them a room, another thirty day chance to be, it's not like thirty days ago. No, this, this goes on. And now, there's a hard sale sign in the front yard. That ought to be another four years. There's nobody coming to the house. The term might not be laid up to wreck aside our house.
So at the hearing, they go before the co official, if it is determined the house is ready to be demolished? It's going to be demolished.
Okay, okay, I can see that we did it.
What, what, what answer would satisfy you?
Also, I would like, yes, that's what I said, I would like. We want to have individual council arbitrariness support. When city officials, like the first guy I got, what he went through, that they are not with the city, they're not for us, they will do the right thing. We got to have somebody because I'm in city code, he went to city code, and we get stomped on. We need somebody that says, "Hey, city, you're wrong." Or tell us, "Hey, you're wrong." What, what is wrong with that?
That's fair. Yeah. Well, there are two issues there. One, it could be the city code needs to be updated in which case we need to get involved and be able to do that. We'll talk about that a little later. The other thing it could be is prudently enforcing code or not enforcing code or, or those. So that's two, two completely definitions. One is making rules, the other is enforcing rules. But, but I appreciate your comment and we will take a look at that and see what we can do. Everybody has costs. If you're not happy with the one you're talking to, you go up one more. Just like in the military. You know, you go off the chain, you land, the next one in line and say, "I'm not satisfied with the end." If that fails, the elected representatives can get involved and I can guarantee it. All you need to have is a responsive to us.
All my goodness, I never thought this was where I was going. You know, you're always going to come back to me. We come back and this, you guys, you know, I'm-
Sir, I'd like to say one last piece. I don't- A lot of times what I've learned is, a lot, a lot of people do not know who their city councilmen are. Most people don't even know what wards they live in. I've gotten calls today concerning some issues. So there's some type of way we need to make sure that citizens in Enid know who their city councilmen are and exactly which ward they live in. Because I guarantee you, if you complain to your city councilman, you have someone that you can hold accountable. And that's what needs to be done. Because a lot of times, we see that all this information is in challenge. We don't know anything about it. We don't hear anything about it. We have so many other things that we're dealing with, so many problems that we're dealing with. But if you can call us directly, then we can go, we can use protocol and we can go to the city manager or the assistant city manager. So if you would call us and talk to us, a lot of times, I have a tablet. I'll let people know, "I can't get to you right away." And I'll write their numbers down. Within twenty-four hours, I'm going to give you a call back. And I think that's a great way of doing it. So use us. That's why we're here, as city councilmen. So that you can bring your complaints to us.
All right, we are going to move on to our next topic of the evening.
Wait, before we do that, is there anyone else with code specific issues? Let me, definitely share. We're not missing any of your Ben.
And Ben, you're our councilman. And you're defending them.
Bring me a specific, I promise, my keys and stuff.
You live a few blocks from us. Our throats.
All right, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about quality of life issues. Our next person signed up is Chad Stewart.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Chad Stewart. I'm on the board of directors for the Northwest Oklahoma Aquatics Association, which is a sponsoring organization for the Aquatic Club of Enid, the USA Swimming Level Three Club here in Enid. I'm a military member and I've been stationed advanced, I'm stationed advanced and moved to Enid two years ago. I want to thank the city for the interest it has placed in youth sports and activities, especially with respect to the youth soccer complex that's in development. Today, I simply want to highlight some of the work that our members, members of our board have done to attract investors and start planning for the creation of a dedicated aquatics facility here in Enid. And to encourage the city to provide support, it provided the opportunity. Alumni at our club include USA Swimming State Champions in Oklahoma, a professional triathlete, as well as NCAA Division One scholarship athletes. Most recently, Micah Chambers, who has signed with University of Tennessee Volunteers to swim on their team. Our team numbers about seventy youth and we have maxed out our capacity at the YMCA. We have a scholarship program which provides access to those youth with financial hardships. These numbers include some, but not all swimmers, not, include some, but not all swimmers in the city. A number of the swimmers in the city swim for Enid High School or for OVA High School. So there's definitely some room to grow aquatics here in Enid. Our coaches are talented and dedicated to developing youth of our city. I encourage the city to include youth aquatics in future city planning. I don't have a specific question. I just want to encourage and highlight the, the work that the board of directors for the Aquatic Club of Enid has done. And maybe you've seen some of this stuff with the potential for bringing an aquatics facility out here in Enid dedicated to swim lessons and aquatic development. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand Chief Prazziato said that a few of the illicit folks from the base were going to come tonight. Are you folks here? Can you raise your hand? Don't know if any were able to make her up. Anyway, sir, thank you for your service and thank you for coming tonight. Being a responsible citizen means you have obligations and responsibilities on both sides of the case.
I really appreciate your hand, Mr. Mayor.
We will take that, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, is it Loretta Norwood?
Good evening, my name is Loretta Norwood. And I just, are you just asking me about the quality of life? And maybe if you guys can help with bringing, developing more youth activity so it kind of goes in with the young men with the aquatics. I was also thinking about places for the young people to go, for them to have fun. That doesn't cost a lot of money, but it'll take the youth off the streets, keeping them out of trouble, not getting addicted, as the gentleman before us had spoke. I remember, I grew up here in Enid and moved away. But as a child, I remember being able to go swimming twenty-five cents. Being able to go to Booker T, Washington. That was our afternoon as well as our evening activities. At least we had a place to go. But a lot of our youth have no place to go. And they find other things to do. So we need to invest in our youth. Is that the main thing? I have several things, but that's what I'm like. Youth, there is another gentleman here that talked to me about our youth. Maybe he will say something. I have other things, but that's all I have for the youth.
Commissioner Wannell, would you like, you've been kind of a champion on that, if you could run up there?
Youth activities here in the city of Enid has been a challenge. I've only been here for about seven years. One of the first things that I noticed was, there's not a lot. One of the few things that it's easy for us to be able to succeed. When I first saw the council, one of the first things that I was notified of was that for the first time in several years, that there wasn't going to be a youth program going during the summertime. And so we came to Germany and trying to figure out what's going on, what's the root cause, and what can we do as a community in order to be able to remedy that problem. And what I found was is that it's a compelling issue. It's got, well, there's many layers to what this problem is. There's a combination of what's going to take places of, of community involvement, community investment, city involvement, city investment in order to be able to get it done. And that's no small feat when you start looking at some of the issues and things that we're facing as a community. Because the pot is only so big in order to be able to draw from. So the journey is consisted of looking at federal funding, state funding, support from organizations like the Boys and Girls Club of America in order to be able to get some framework to work with. We've gone back and forth with different buildings in order to be able to see if we can get those buildings renovated. We've not seen anywhere for five hundred to a, five hundred thousand to a million dollars in order to be able to renovate a building, in order to be able to make it right to be able to put children in. Because what we don't want to do is we don't want to get a facility and just throw children inside of it without the resources. Because one, as soon as they can find a owner, they're going to leave it because they're not going to want to be there. And two, we want to, they never want them to be safe. So I say all this to say this, it's an issue that we, that has been identified, we understand, we know. And we're constantly working to do that. There's several boards that are actively working in order to be able to develop youth programs as well as facilities as, that are, as community centers and youth centers. Right now, as we, as we speak, in order to be able to get done. What I can tell you definitively is it's not going to happen tomorrow, that's unfortunate. But it's happening. It's going to happen. That's, that's, that's my promise. I'm not going anywhere until it gets done. And so that's, that's about as best I can give you. It's, it's a need. We know it. But the bottom line is, we have to have money, we have to have resources in order to be able to get it done. And, you know, over here, we have to, that's an issue. We have to put money there. Homelessness, that's an issue. We have to put money there. All of these issues of aquatics, soccer complexes, roads, potholes, buildings that need to be torn to the ground, all of these things require dollars. And I love you to tell, but people are really tight-vested at this time. Though we feel like the economy, we hear the economy is booming, booming. Well, some of us, we still feel in tightness in our pockets in terms of how far our dollars are going. So we have to be real positive about that and, and really be focused. Because at some point in time, you're going to hear, "Hey, look, we're ready. They started with this program. We need some investment." I want you to think back to this moment. Think back to this moment. Think back to this moment. Are, are you willing to give what ability you have in order to be able to get it done? Because we can't keep looking to the person to the left or the right of us in order to be able to make it happen. And I've sat in our rooms over the course of the past three years that people continue to continuously look for the next person in order to be able to fund it. Well, it's time for the community, we're gonna come together and we're gonna get this done. Can I get your commitment on that one? It's our kids, nobody else is gonna do it for us.
My town's a city code has something to do with it. It's costing a billion dollars to redo a building?
No, it has everything to do with it. A hundred percent.
About half a million was for the old Evans Building, is it that bad?
So, no, no, I, so I can tell you, because I spent well over 100 hours inside of that building looking at the air conditioning that didn't go all the way throughout.
Yeah, I didn't used to have air conditioning. I went to school, I was just...
Okay, so I'm gonna wait and finish talking. You don't mind, we can, I guess, for a few minutes time. And I can have communication with the people who want to hear, but what I won't do is be disrespectful, because I didn't disrespect you. And so, what I'm gonna tell you is that building needed air conditioning, because we don't want our kids inside the building that's sweltering hot. In order for all kids to have access to it, we need to have ADA compliance, which means we had to have an elevator to get the handicapped kids who needed to be able to come in there and play, to have a good time. We need to make it readily accessible for them. There was asbestos inside the walls and inside the ceilings in that building, that had to be torn out. There was hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs that needed to be done in that building. And so, we made a quantum decision. I said, if we're gonna spend the money, we need to put the money and resources in order to be able to get it done, not bury it into a building that was gonna cost millions of dollars just to maintain once we got it to code. So understand that when we go through this process, we are doing due diligence to make sure that we don't throw money into things that's not going to happen. And I take this very seriously. Please, please forgive me if I come off, but this is, I don't get paid to do this and I spent hundreds of hours in order to be able to improve my community and I don't take it lightly when I get disrespected. So, let's, let's keep it dignified.
So you're saying you picked another building, or that building is out now?
That building is out. We moved on from that building and we're looking to construct a building from the ground up, it's what we're trying to do. So we're designing to exactly what it is that we want to do, but understand that that now requires property, so somebody wants to donate us a nice big piece of property, we'll take it. It requires money in order to be able to do the groundwork. If you've got some construction equipment, if you're willing to donate time and resources and people are willing to get it done, we'll take it. It requires construction cost in order to be able to build the building from the ground up. If you've got some to donate, we'll take it. We need technology, we need doors, we need walls, we need all those things to make this happen. If you've got some, we will take it.
I would just like to add to my comments, that as we prepare for the youth programs and the youth, youth buildings, that we do not forget the East Side.
Thank you.
I've also, to the extent that we have, so this is one of those things, it's an elephant, you know? You gotta have it one bite at a time to get the problem resolved. And so, it's gonna take a lot of different pieces. And, and the youth center and that kind of youth program is fantastic, but it's a piece of it. But while that's going on, while there are other big problems, me and others are trying to get other bites done. We're about to put a bunch of money in a skate park on the east side of town that is going to dramatically increase that kind of facility for folks. We want kids to be able to walk to it. Pretty close to halfway between Longfellow and Anderson we're talking about. It's gonna be a great place. We've got Longfellow's getting a big brand new soccer field for the schools, putting in along with the folks doing the soccer complex, which is gonna, again, as we mentioned, a lot of money goes in soccer complex out on the west side of town. We're posting lots of kids involved in that. That getting, having soccer kids to do is gonna be a lot of pieces. And so, don't, because this is hard, because this is complicated, that we can approach this and it's gonna take a lot of different pieces, a lot of points. So, so pick a project. If there's something, don't wait for us. You know, if there's a project you care about, nothing happens unless there's somebody who gives it an emotive. So, so find a piece and pick your nibble with the elephant. That's, that's how problems solve.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, Ms. Norwood. James Stevenson has a comment to make about EJRT football.
Hello, how y'all doing today? Um, just to add to what y'all already said, I mean, we've got programs already here that I don't put no money for as our football program. We got all these coaches, including myself, that volunteer to try to teach these young men how to play football so they can be ready for the next level. It's very hard. You have highway doing football field, you got potholes, you got holes in there where kids get hurt. You got sprinkler systems, you got it above ground where they can get hurt as well. I mean, you talk about doing these soccer complexes, all these other things, but don't forget, you had a program here when I was a young man and playing EJRT football that has tapered off. You know what I mean? If y'all can figure out how to help that program as well, it would help the coaches and make it more kids that come out as well.
I'll speak to that and I really appreciate that comment, because that's important. We do need to maintain and do a good job of what is in what we have. And so, one of the things I would encourage you to do is, is that we have grant money, federal grant money, that can be available for that. But the thing is, is that we have to have folks that show up to our, to the meetings and suggest right packages and then apply for that money. There are resources that are available that may be able to support that. Also, when it comes to identifying those specific areas that are, are these public parks that are having a problem?
Oh, they're like, okay, they're...
They've got their trees down.
Yeah, so these public stuff, when it comes to that, if you can't get the city to respond, pick any commissioner, pick all the mayors, and send an email and say, "We've got a lot of our kids complaining, this park has a hole here." This is my promise to you, when you send these emails to these commissioners, these are just people, people just like y'all, you send an email and you respond to it, because again, these are our kids, we're concerned about the health of our well, our kids. I know what it feels like sometimes. But one of the reasons why, just quickly, the reason why we did this, is because we feel the same disconnect from you all as you feel from the, feel the government. It's hard for us, we have, I've been on this commission for three years, and in three years, there's only been two meetings where we had this many people in our city, for being for a city council. In three years, and I can look at the faces across this room, and I only, only a few of y'all have ever been to a city council meeting. And so, the only way that we get to know what you want and the concerns that you have is either A, you email us, give us a phone call, or B, you come to the meeting and you tell us what it is that you want. Because I've been through churches, some of y'all don't believe that because I can't be in church and I introduce myself so you knew who I was. But otherwise, there's no real way for us to be able to find it unless you want to knock it door to door throughout the whole time, but then we don't get to really do any work. So, we, we need from you all is to contact us and let us know exactly what it is that you need. So I appreciate your comment, I really do. The next thing that I need you to do after this, within the next couple of days, shoot me or somebody else on this commission an email and tell us exactly where you have any problems and holes. And then, and I definitely want you to email me, because we're gonna talk about what we can do in order to be able to get you some funding to help fund the program. Can you do that for me?
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. John Gray would like to have a comment about Coach A Kid.
Mr. Mayor, city councilman, there's a lot of people in this room that know who I am and what I do. There's a lot of people in this room that don't know who I am and don't know what I do. There's a lot of people in this room that just don't care. Now, I'm gonna throw out the catchphrases, and I'm gonna try to keep this like less than they been. I'm gonna throw out some of the catchphrases. Trauma, ages, high age scores, resilience, addiction, incarceration, whether it's male or female, hunger, low self-esteem, hope, resilience. All of those things are addressed by the Coach A Kid program. Now, I've been at the helm for, this is my third school year. When I first took over the program, there was about 24 kids. To date, well, they say it's not bragging, you can back it up. Within three months of my being here, I was able to increase participation by 52%. Right? And I start each year new. So I started in August, and in August to date, I have 77 mentors matched up with 77 kids. However, there's 8,003 kids in the city in Enid. So, what I would like to see is not only more participation, excuse me, I don't mean to be rude, but everyone that's in here that is a resident of the city of Enid to help me, help these youth not to become addicted, not to fail out of school, not to get involved with opioids, not to have to deal with the, with teen crisis. And, 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 is mentoring the only thing that can help our youth? No. Is it one of the things that can and will? Yes. Why? Well, guess what? There is some kind of strange correlation between a child and an adult where that child feels that there's someone that cares about them. Miraculously, their grades get better. Miraculously, their behavior gets better. I have a mentor that's in this room, and one of the things he said to me was, "John, this is one of the best things I've ever done, thank you so much." He thanked me for becoming a mentor. He's getting as much out of mentoring as the child. That's what we want and that's what we need. So, am I a six minute thing? Yep. Okay. So, what I would like to see is, because I work for a 501(c)(3), that means I'm dependent on funding. Now, I filed for, for the CBGB grant, I was there, CBGB grant? You got it. I only, I only totally filed for $10,000. Takes a heck of a lot more to run this program, all right? I'm the only person that does what I do. Some of you people see me walking in the street, shaking people's hands, asking questions, being in people's faces. I don't have a problem with that, as you obviously can tell. But what I would like to see is, if there's any way possible that we could partner up with the city of Enid and have Coach A Kid become an Enid program? As opposed to being beholden onto funds that we have to apply for? Because what I would hate to see is, John, yeah, that's a great program, but you know we can't afford it anymore. I went to Oklahoma City for the trauma conference at the conference center. So I sit at my little banner, my United Way, and people are asking me, "What do you do? What do you do?" "Oh, I'm the program coordinator for the Coach A Kid mentoring program," and talking about mentoring and talking about, you know, the docs and all this other stuff. And 10 out of 10 educators said, "We need that kind of program in Oklahoma City." This program is a beacon, not only to those that live in Enid, but to those in other cities, in other states. It really burns me up when I read in the newspaper that 600 men showed up because an organization said, "You know what? We need 60 guys to come and be mentors for these, for these little boys in one day." 600 men! I don't understand why that has not happened here. So, understand that these young kids, after we jump off the planet, they're gonna be the ones that's running Enid. And if we don't put them in a position to feel better about themselves, what do we have? Those kids are gonna be the kids that are gonna be in jails. They're not gonna be contributing tax dollars wise, because they're not going to be working. They're going to be part of, for some, the school of prison complex. And then, those tax dollars don't get translated into fixed potholes. It costs more to incarcerate than to educate. There's something absolutely crazy about that. And if, if this program can't become a city program, I'm gonna say this last name, I'm gonna shut up and say it. If this city pro, if this can't become a city program, then I charge every last single person in this room, except for the fire department, because they just gave me six new mentors. I digress. I charge every one of us in this room for not reaching out to these babies, to this young man. Now, let me make this a little more relatable, then I'm really gonna sit down and shut up. I've been homeless. I've been homeless in this country and I've been homeless in Germany. I have a learning disability. I have gone to college and I have graduated from college. I am the exact child that I am trying to help reach. So y'all stick a pin in there, that's a memory pin. And if it's at all possible, if this program can become a city program, that'd be wasting some lifeblood. If not, I, again, I charge everyone with helping me to make a difference to our future, because if we don't do it now, these kids will be lost and then we'll be going like this, "Man, this kid, whatever, he's the one that's bothering me," and da-da-da. But we're pointing this finger and we got these other three fingers pointing back to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your passion, Mr. Gray. We are gonna switch over to infrastructure, but if there's anyone else that has a question about quality of life issue? Okay, Durbin Norwood Senior has a question about infrastructure.
To the board and the city commissioners, I'm Durbin Norwood Senior, senior pastor of the West Side Church of God in Christ in Little Oklahoma, 1902, West Chester. I'm concerned about the water lines coming from Col A. And there, there was a survey, survey in front of the church, and I saw them and I asked them what were they serving for, and they told me it was a pipeline that's coming from Col A. And we had put in to build duplexes out by the church for the city citizens. Everything has been passed. We've got one hole holes right now to stop us from proceeding with the projects. But I'm just wondering about this pipeline that they're putting through the drainage ditch, because we are gonna have to put in a sewer system to go across Chester just to empty our sewer. And I'm thinking, what type of effect, of effect would that have on my project?
I'm not an engineer. I would like to say, we can't have an engineer, and that's not my legal.
Let me jump in there first, too. I'm not sure what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about with Col A, and I know what you're talking about with the distribution of life of the new water plant to the existing water plant, but I'm not sure. You know, back in Swarthage and these are ponds, the guy told me that the water line was going to be retaining ponds that's coming from Col A, Col A.
Okay, plan, yeah.
I have a question. I have to direct your question. Yes, we are surveying to put a potable water line that would interconnect blended water, potable water with the existing distribution point at Plan One. We are looking on both sides of Chester at this point. Um, as far as I'm concerned, with the exception of submitting plans, your project has been approved and pending closing vacating the street. Your, uh, sewer line, if I'm not mistaken, is a, uh, pump system?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we are worried, we will de-conflict. The good news is with the pressure of Santa Ana Sewer, your elevations aren't critical to your flows. So the ability to de-conflict those comes along each.
My point for everybody, that's.
Yeah. He's building, um, the duplexes for some low-income senior folks that are part of his church and his congregation. And there is a site plan process that developers use to bring their site plans to the city. It goes through review with not just engineering, code, public utilities, public works, fire marshal, and everyone. And in that process, through the exchange of information, usually will be an email, we work our way down to what's compliant with the code, what you need to do, how you need to do it, and what are the best ways technically to get what we need. And in his case, his Santa Ana Sewer is going to be pumped because the elevation, it's flat, it's so flat that it won't rain if you don't pump it. Is that English enough?
Your version is, if the water line is not going to cause a problem for your sewer, both can go through there and it'll be fine.
Because the sewer will be going over the water line.
Over or under one of them, but, but there, the, their sunny roof is that right way for both, because they'll both be under pressure.
And, and yours is, yours is crossing north-south, which is perpendicular to the, to the potable water. So I'm glad you brought it up, I really am. It's another note, uh, came, uh, behind your door, so I can make sure that I, once again, pass that on to my side, but there is something that is not in the ground yet, that's gotta, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Good job, Norwood. Thanks, Chris. I have a few questions here, I did not have a name on it, so I'll just ask some questions. Why are we purchasing so much pipeline when we haven't obtained all the right money yet?
Yeah, you don't have to be an engineer, uh, to, to answer this one, you'd be, um, be the city manager, I guess. We haven't purchased any pipe. So we are over fifty percent complete on purchasing the easements. We report on that typically about once a month to the commission, and we have one coming, uh, one of the meetings in March. And so, uh, the project is about thirty percent complete. Uh, we do have a website that, uh, some of you want to stay around at the end. We'll pull up and show you some information about Col A and the pipeline, we'd love to talk about it. Um, but, but, uh, right now, what we're waiting on is we've engaged a construction manager at risk to go and review the thirty percent plans, or the plans at whatever stage that are at, some of them are a little more than, um, thirty percent. And that's where we're at, the commission is waiting to hear back from us. We're going to report what that C bar guarding, or what guard, um, has, uh, has come up and told us. And so that information has not come forth yet. But just to clarify, we're processing buying easements, it's going very well, over fifty percent the last report. I look at, and that's where we're at in the project.
Also, Gerald, I'd like to mention that, um, I'd like to mention also that we have, um, I've missed it, we basically hired a second entity, another group to be able to make sure that the numbers are right. An independent study firm to make sure that the numbers are gonna be right.
Second question, is it true you are using eminent domain to secure these rights?
Would you like me to take it up? See, that you can handle up to. Uh, yes, it is true. However, it has been a last resort, and I assure you that every effort has been made. Because not only have city staff been involved, and Kristi Danskie and his team, and Smith Roberts, the land service that was hired, they have made every effort to make, uh, deals with people. Uh, we've made, I made it a secret, we're paying a hundred twenty dollars per rod, and we're paying damages on top of that. So the damages are whatever that is, uh, for, for many people, it's expenses, it's culverts, it's, it's damaged crops, it's, it's, it's that kind of stuff. And so, uh, again, we've been very successful in acquiring over fifty percent, we continue to move on, um, acquiring property. We realize there's gonna be some folks, um, and we understand that, um, that for whatever reason are not gonna want to, to come to an agreement. So the law allows for utilities in particular, and other, um, public projects, uh, remedy, a resolution with the law, and it's eminent domain. So I'm aware that we brought eminent domain, there's six cases that the commission has approved. We can't, we cannot bring any eminent domain against anybody without the commission approving. And that's the initial process. And even when that happens, um, we have an attorney that goes and files that paperwork, and works with the people, and ultimately it'll end in court unless a settlement is not resolved, or there's commissioners appointing, there's a process. But it's, it's governed at that point by the, by the law, uh, a judge, commissioners appointing, but not before this commission, before you approve it. There's only six instances, there probably will unfortunately, maybe some more. Um, because that's, because that's the process. Two hundred and seventy parcels, there's some two hundred and thirty parcels along the way, um, a lot of owners, not everybody necessarily wants to make deals, so.
Thank you, Jared. Last question on this card, what is the actual cost of Col A pipeline, including interest? We don't know yet. But as soon as we know, we'll tell you. Ms. Lady Norwood, will you approach the mic? We're gonna talk about the high cost of water.
Good evening again. Um, that was basically the question. The water bills are extremely high, and just kind of wanna know why. I see the cost on there, it's listed separately, but it's the cost of sewer, the same as the cost of water, and it's just expensive here.
We, we started this, so I've been on the commission six, seven years, and we started increasing your water rate several years ago, and I will tell you why. We are, uh, we're running out of water for the city unit, and we know that the aquifers that we've been pumping water from for many years will not support us and everybody else who uses them. We may, nobody else uses them, maybe we'll be okay, but it doesn't work that way. Farmers can use them, oil patchers can use them when it's going, uh, the aquifer won't support it. So we have to do something else, and that's the, the pipeline call, and we know it's gonna be incredibly expensive. We don't know how it's going to be, we know very expensive. And because we knew it was gonna be expensive when we got around to building it, we started incrementally easing water rates up so everybody didn't have a big shock at once. It's expensive. We are not the most expensive in the state, and I tell you what, we're ahead of the game because we're dealing with a problem today that every other community in the state of Oklahoma, in the southwest United States, is gonna have to deal with in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. Because water is not becoming more plentiful. We are facing a changing climate that is making us a living in a more arid region. And the days of being able to just pump all the water you want from the aquifer are, are gone. So we are facing a really complicated problem, it's a very expensive problem, and that means everybody is going to have to pay one. Now, the bright side is, you're paying the same rate that everybody else is paying, we're not giving anybody a big discount under poke of water. Um, we're all, everybody, if you use more water, you're paying more water. Everybody has that skin in the game because the community only is able to survive and thrive and grow if we have secured, I, I think, what is, without a whole lot of question, the most important resource for this community. And in the bright side, hopefully, hopefully, the water rate increases that we scheduled, which would just go a little bit every year, just kind of a, a small, uh, will be enough along with the other revenue that we have to pay for the pipeline, we don't know yet. Um, but I, I hope that, that, yeah, that they, they're not gonna go down. Um, and that's just the hard reality of, of living where we live.
You gonna let me speak, right? I first might, sir, hey. Somebody said, "Need to build a Mitchell by name." I had a man say to me that the people in Enid are so stupid that they needed somebody to just run the city and do whatever they want. Somebody said that, just kidding. People of Enid are not as stupid as sometimes what we wanna think that they are, but saying that, you're putting money into a project, and after all these years, you still cannot tell us how much it's going to cost, seems absolutely assive. I mean, just absolutely assive. And to say that these aquifers won't replenish, not being truthful to the citizens of Enid, Oklahoma, that's just not being truthful, or wholly truthful with them, that these wells that do exist will not recharge. It's just not true. You could have built twice as many wells as what exists right now for far less than what is already seeming to cost for the Col A project. Could've done that, you still can do that. But you have to be forthright because everybody's water bill is going up. And you, the water bill, you, you're making this happen so that you can pay for a project that you don't even know how much it's gonna cost. But we're so stupid, and we are just that ignorant, and so stupid that we cannot figure out that two plus two is four? I don't think the people are that stupid, even though you kinda seem to believe that they are.
Mr. Mitchell?
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, because I, I listen to you sometimes, uh, Mr. Easy. Your tone is very condescending, you're a pretty arrogant fellow, and you, you seem to dismiss people very quickly, you're very quick to dismiss them. All I'm saying is, we could be a lot more forthright with the people of Enid because some of these things that have been done in this city, because you're talking about funding youth programs. My God, half a billion dollars for, for a pipeline, you could build every youth program that you need in this city, and, and every facility and pay for it. And you probably could fix every, could've fixed every road and pothole in this city for that amount of money. Now, I'm just saying, all I'm saying is, you should be a lot more forthright with the citizens of Enid because I'm for the commission. I, I think that all of you should be paid. I think that you work an enormous amount of hours, and it's gratuitous, and I don't think that it should be. We pay our city manager, and have just hired an assistant manager, and the city commission is not getting a dime, and just hired an assistant, no, no disrespect, sir, just hired an assistant manager, and, and the commissioners aren't getting a dime for the enormous amount of hours that they put in. And I understand, and I understand being service and doing service, I've done it all my life, I've done it all my life. So I, I think that that is not a scenario that should be occurring in a city the size of Enid, Oklahoma. But you folks are responsible to tell me and every citizen of Enid how much this project is going to cost. Because I, I, it's only.
Okay, okay.
It's going up. So I, what I, my, what I'm gonna inform to this commission is, when are you going to give us a ballpark, a, a real figure about the cost this time?
Let me take, have to step back, by the way.
I'm gonna step back.
And, and apologies, I am not an asshole, and I'm really sorry about that.
You are, yeah, you are.
But we're self-aware. I, I actually sat with you for two hours in my office and gone through every report we had.
And you, and you are the person that said, "Everybody in here is stupid." You said that.
I, I don't think that, that.
Ah, what did you say, Doc, damn?
Now, but let me, let me tell you, and tell everyone here, you guys, Mr. Mitchell, come. And I'll tell, I'll tell everybody, hang on now.
Don't, don't try to put me on the same level as you.
Take, take a step back.
Stop you from doing that.
Let me tell everybody else what I, what I told you. We are trying, no, sir, we're, we're gonna take.
Sir, what we're gonna do, uh, the commissioners, we're gonna, we're gonna.
I, I will tell you what I told everybody else, I will tell you what I told Mr. Mitchell, I will tell everyone here, we have spent, me, now, more than anyone else, I've, I've been a lake here longer than anybody else sitting here, we have spent, everyone here, Ron Johnson who just walked out, everyone who has worked for the city unit, we have spent more time in the last handful of years to give you the best possible answer to that very question. And this is the single most complicated thing that the city unit has ever done. This is the single most studied thing that the city unit has ever done, and no one is taking this lightly. We are agonizing over this every single day. We have engineers who are far more skilled, more knowledgeable than me, than anyone else sitting up here, we have a building full of engineers who are doing everything they can to give us the best possible answer, because it's the single biggest thing the city unit will ever do, and it scares the hell out of every one of us. We are not taking this lightly. We are not being dishonest with this community. We are putting as much effort as anyone has the capacity to do to give you the best possible answer. So my kids who are sitting there right in front of you still have drinking water in thirty-five years. We come, we have staff come to the meeting at least once a quarter, open meetings, and anyone is welcome to attend, sometimes monthly. Every time there is an update, it is available, the newspaper publishes about half the time, it's on the website every time. And, yeah, we don't know the hard number because it is that complicated. We, we could've gone out and drilled some more wells, but if you have a milkshake and you got one straw in it, and you put another straw in it, there's the same, same amount of milkshake there, okay? We have an aquifer that is finite, it is not infinite, and we know what the level in that well is, every single well, we, we monitor this stuff obsessively. We know what the aquifer has been doing. We look at every option, we look at drilling more wells, we look at building a lake, we have, I assure you, spent more time on this single issue than anything else in the entire history of the city unit, and you may not like what we do. And it's going to cost a boatload of money, and I'm sorry your water rates will go up. But please, please, understand, no one's lying to this community, no one is hiding it to this community, we don't have some number like written in an email that I'm not telling you. We have shared everything, and it's just that complicated. Please, give us some credit, we are doing everything we can, we are doing the best we can. Give us some credit.
So I don't, I don't, I don't know if any of y'all have ever volunteered in an organization before. If you've ever volunteered in an organization and then have, have, well, I'll do this, if you've ever volunteered in an organization before, and then have somebody tell you that while you're volunteering, you're doing something disingenuous, or you're doing something to try and rob them, or you're doing something. or you're doing something, it almost makes you want to say, oh, fine, do it yourself. Now, I'm not saying that's what we want to do, but you need to understand the heart of the individuals who are up here. We're doing this because we're trying to take care of our community. And that really is the, the, the long and short of that. So let me break down real quick why we don't have a definitive number. So anytime you try and do a project, anybody in here ever tried to do a construction project inside their own home? So when you're doing it yourself and you're, you go into it, you say you want to build, let's say we're gonna build a wall inside of our own home, right? You go through it, you think about all the supplies, all of the labor that it's gonna take in order to be able to get it done. Takes a real long process to be able to figure out everything that you're gonna need in order to be able to do it. Now, for a wall, you're just talking about a few hundred dollars. We're talking about much more than that. Now, if you get to the store and the part that you budgeted for the paint costs more than what you budgeted for, well, where, where's the money coming from? If the lumber costs more than what it's supposed to, the drywall costs more than it's supposed to. Right now, we're in a process for a hundred million dollar pipeline, hundreds of million dollar pipeline at this particular point. We're in a process right now negotiating with a company that is going to come in and give us a number that says if it goes anything more than that, they're gonna be responsible for it. So we know when it's all said and done, the number that we said is the number it's going to be. So we're going through this arduous process in order to be able to ensure that when it's all said and done and when we finish, we don't end up with a price tag beyond what it is that we say that we can afford. So when we tell you, we don't have the price tag now, but we're working towards a price tag and so we don't give you this margin of a hundred million dollars plus or minus. So you come at what it's all said and done and it comes up, up, you know, a hundred billion dollars because we can find a way in order to be able to get a more concrete number. Now, I don't know about you, but when we sat down and we voted and we just discussed this, we said we would rather wait and get a definitive number than just fire off a number and just push forward and hope for the best. We don't have a budget. And for that reason, we're going through this process to make sure that we don't go over. Can we understand that aspect of it? Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
All right, thank you both. Sir, do you have a follow-up comment that you want to make?
I have a, um, okay. Mr. Mitchell, you sat in my office when we talked about this.
Yeah, but it's going in and out.
You sat in my, my office when we were both running for political office and talked about water and kind of talk, talk through need for whether we need more water or not. As some of you know, I have another volunteer job. It's certainly on the Water Resources Board. And that's the organization for the state that manages water, everybody in the state. And the aquifer, the Seminole Terrace Aquifer is where we're getting the majority of our water. And that aquifer does recharge, but it recharges slowly and we're taking an awful lot of water out of it. Well, the commission before us, Ben was on it. They studied it, they had people, smart people that came in and studied it and looked at it. And they determined that fifty years out, there's not gonna be enough water in that aquifer if we continue to grow it. And we all of them will continue to grow it. And they made a decision of looking for other options like Ben suggested. Well, Western Oklahoma is, we're just one of many that are gonna have to struggle if we don't do something and confirm a, a good water source in the future. Third Thursday of every month, if you want to see people fighting about water, come to the Oklahoma Resources Board at five o'clock. Because every month, we have people, good people, farmers, ranchers, that they come down here and fight about water because they don't have enough. There's not enough water in Western Oklahoma today. And there's soon not gonna be enough water in fifty years. And then people are gonna be grasping water and they're gonna be moving water around the state like we've never seen before. We're already talking about putting a centralized system to move water from Eastern Oklahoma because that's where all our water is, to Western Oklahoma. It's gonna take a lot of money to do that. But if Western Oklahoma is gonna continue to exist in fifty years, we're gonna have to do that. So be careful about poking at us about because you think the Seminole Terrace Aquifer's got plenty of water today. Maybe it does today, but it did in two thousand and fifteen during our drought. I, I don't want to sit up here and act like I'm lecturing here about something.
May I approach the microphone?
It's not your turn.
How long you feel the rest of my time?
One-time Enid resident and I just wanted to add some more comments about the pipeline. I want to thank the commissioners first for their service. They are true servants. On the subject of water, no one disagrees that it's probably the most important asset that a community can have and no one wants to run out of it. My problem with the pipeline is, I personally believe that it's going to bankrupt this city. I think the people here in Enid, if they're given the proper information, as a whole, everybody makes the correct decisions. What I don't think happened is that we weren't given that information. The pipeline came up for a vote and the person that was hired by the city to be a cheerleader for it was turned out to not be a very reputable person. And in my opinion, that vote should be re-held. I would, I would almost bet that if I surveyed everybody listening and if we took a true vote of the whole population of Enid, no one would be aware that the city of Enid spent a quarter of a million dollars to an engineering firm in Oklahoma City called the Gertie Company to do a detailed study about what would be the best solution for our water needs going into the future. No one's ever adequately explained to me why that company was not listened to. They listed from one through six, the absolute best solutions for water for the city of Enid. Their number one recommendation was, Milton's already alluded to it and Commissioner Ezell was alluded to it, is we could have built and drilled more water wells. The next solutions were, and this goes back to a quality of life issue, is that we could have built city lakes and made, identified three locations that could have made good city lakes. And I think everybody agrees, Enid is one of the largest cities that I've personally been associated with that doesn't have their own city lake. And the absolute last place was the pipeline.
Yes, it was. But I'm sorry, you said it, you said it enough.
Anyhow, if, if one is logical and thinks about it.
I can respond to all three of those if you want, I can tell you why. If you really want to answer those questions, I can tell you why.
As soon as I, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Well, I, I'd rather answer that question than you ask your, ask your next one, next, next one and move on to that.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
So the first thing is, is that, um, let's get, let's talk about the lake thing because I hear that a lot. Uh, why don't we build a lake? Let's build a lake, let's build a lake. So one of the biggest employers that we have here in, 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 in this, in this area is Vance Air Force Base. And I don't know if you guys know, but Vance Air Force Base, as an employer, they fly these little Indy city planes all over the place. And I don't know if you know, but one of the most terrifying things in the, in a plane when you're flying around is a flock of little, little Indy city birds as a small aircraft in your flight path. And so what we did is we made a valuation decision to say this. Is it or is it not important for us to make sure to protect those pilots while they're in the air, while they're flying around, uh, to make sure that they are safe? As the one of the biggest, if not the biggest employer in this region, we have to make that a priority. Would, would we agree to that? That's, that's pretty important that we make sure that the safety of those pilot pilots who learn how to fly here and then further go off, go off overseas and protect us. That's important that they know what they're doing. Because this is what, that's one of the main things that we do here in this community is we help facilitate the, the pilot training. So that's, that's, that's one. The next thing we need to talk about is, uh, the, the other part is drilling more holes and drilling more wells into, into these water aquifers. So again, Ben's already alluded to about multiple straws into the same pool. But the other thing is this, the diversification of how we receive our water. See, I don't know if you guys remember, but a few years back, they had this thing called a crack. You guys remember that when they talked about the crack and everything, that they were talking about shutting down the base? Now, I don't want to make this all about the base, but this is a critical component. For a base like that, it's important that there's never a risk that they lose the resources that is required in order to be able to keep that base going. And if we ever got to a point where the aquifers got so low that a user like the base was not able to obtain this water, there would be a consideration about whether or not it would be important for them to be able to move that base to an area where they have more reliable resources. So when we start talking about whether or not, why the pipeline is important, it goes back to the fact that we need to make sure that we not only make sure we have enough water, but we diversify the way in which we get it. So again, if you've only got one stream of income and that income drops off, you're broke, right? But when you have multiple streams of income, if one of them goes low or one of those slows down, we still got another way in order to be able to receive our money. Same thing with our natural resources. Water, without water, this community does not survive. So it's important that we make sure we diversify the way in which we received our water in order to be able to ensure the future of this community, which left a pipeline. Make sense? Okay, please tell me.
Man, if, if that region goes about birds and lakes, we could shut down every military base in the nation. Tanker, for instance, I mean. So anyhow, let, let this.
Do, do they, do they train, do they train young pilots of really small planes, a tanker? That's, that's why I made that point to make sure that I read and read the sheet that these were, these were young pilots, new pilots and small planes.
How a pilot's gonna identify the.
Sure, right? It's, it's a real thing for a guy who's getting their first opportunity inside a plane, right?
But I don't think that that would be an issue. But anyhow, one of my questions is, if, if, when you spend a quarter million dollars to an engineering firm, did the city of Enid say they don't know what they're talking about so that they asked for a repo from that company? But anyhow.
Do you want, you want to answer or?
I just want to flesh up my statement. Anyhow, we've been told on the national level that a bill had to be passed before you could see what was in it. Now, as a microcosm of that, we're being told we've gotta build a pipeline before we know how much it costs.
That's a lie.
Now, I, I, well, anyhow, I.
Who, who said that?
Pardon?
Who said that we have to build it before we, before we, before we know how much it costs?
You just said that earlier, you don't know how much it costs.
We have to build it here.
It, okay, let me ask you this. The money that's being spent on land acquisition?
Uh-huh.
Pipeline's not.
Correct.
Does that all get refunded back to the city?
No, of course not. When you get a survey on building in order to be able to determine how much it's gonna cost to build it, do you get that money back? Or do you make a calculation inside this more extensive?
How much is going to be spent before the decision's made not to build the pipeline?
Well, you need to have heard of one of the little.
My final statement is, our water bills are high and we haven't seen anything yet. And I would, I would bet anybody in this room or any commissioner, you name our charity, I will bet you that this pipeline will bankrupt the city of Enid.
What's your number, what do you want to put up?
You, you give me a number.
Thank you for your time, sir. We are, we are about one-third of the way through the cards I have over here. So let's move on to the next question. Alvaro Canar has a question about drainage.
I have a small project, very small project, right around in front of my home. My home originally was walk-in. And, and the building's draining for years. And they're feeling, nobody has personally addressed it, but I know that the city is aware that like Enid right now, if you go there, getting rain, the water just sits there. And when the temperature drops, it freezes. And it's very inconvenient if I want to go west. I have to go south or north, east first to go west when I should be able to go down the stream. And I know that the city is aware of it, it's been drained once before. And I feel like I shouldn't have addressed the issue because you know that it clogs up. And I feel like there's something should be done and I'm requesting, there's something to be done where we're continuing to drain through, uh, you know. And I'm cold since they're hot. And one of my issues is that I have to put code into this because they come on my street and all of their community threaten the village to abolish homes. I want you to fix the homes up. What would my home look like sitting nice on Raggedy Street with rain, you know, water? They don't even go together. And I'm requesting that.
Make your address.
Three twenty-one, three twenty-one, New Paul Bridge.
Yeah, I think that, uh, I think there may be some issues with that. Uh, I don't know exactly what they are, but I know some staff has looked at it, so maybe, maybe, uh.
I didn't call and they're voicing this, but nobody can turn my call.
Well, I tell you what, we're gonna get a return call right now because I think if you, if I go back to the back of the room, somebody's gonna come talk to you about that. I think there's an issue with about where the property's, whose property it is. I don't know all that, but if, but as we get more, we'll definitely look into that. Tracking, what you just said, three twenty-one and all that.
Right, this is in the middle.
Hey, Bill, I think you need to make sure to talk, talk to our, the, the gentleman in the hand jacket for you. He's nice. All right, next question is, well, a little statement before the question. The street in front of the PJ Family Fair has been a hazard for many years. The city of Enid comes every once in a while to fill up the street. Now, my question, if it was on the west side, would the street still be a hazard or fixed properly?
I've got the answer to that one, uh, uh, which is Broadway. Broadway, this meeting, uh, fixed right now is a great example. It's been fixed from Washington Street downtown all the way to Thirty Street.
It's Wabash.
Yes, Wabash, I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
I'm talking about, that was my question, it's in Southern Heights. It's in Southern Heights.
Okay. Great, great. So, um, we, we've got the address now, so we will definitely take a look at it. Yes, I think I've actually commuted with that, that location too because I think we come out there from time to time and write in it. Uh, it, it may need it again. So it's the street I'm thinking about, it hasn't, hasn't been problematic, so. And we also need to look at your, uh, the street south of that, north of Wabash. Okay, what we need probably is we're gonna capture all these addresses tonight. Uh, we're not gonna talk about the Seaplane Fix School. Uh, that's one way. The commissioners have said we want to capture all these addresses so that we can work on them so that, so that we can try to be more efficient in doing this. So we appreciate you bringing that to us, we'll get on with this.
And with every one of these, the, the city of Enid website, enid.org, every one of us, our contact information is up there. If you don't feel like staff is addressing, when you talk to staff addressing your issues, email us, call us. My, my, our, our email address is really simple, it's beezell@enid.org. First, first letter for first name and the last name at enid.org, same for all of us. Our phone numbers are online. Please, please contact me. I, I, I assure you, I respond to every email I get. All right, next question from Deborah Norwood. Why are the Enid travelers gearing for the west side of Enid and leaving the east side now?
Well, I've, uh, we've kind of talked about the east side all night, seeing Mike, and one thing I, I do want to say is, the east side is not the ghetto. You, you haven't seen the ghetto. You have not seen a ghetto. It does not have a ghetto. Yeah, we have some vacant homes and we have some, you know, some rundown homes, but Enid east side is not the ghetto. I'm sorry, it's, it's not. So if y'all want to see a ghetto, I can Google it. It'll show you that a ghetto, a real ghetto there.
That is true.
So, you know, but my, my, my main thing is, I was born here, I wasn't raised here, but when I came back, we brought our children here because we thought it would be a better life for them, you know, in the cities and stuff. But my problem is now is. But my problem is now, is the east side is still the same, there's nothing else changed. Yeah, you brought some housing there, but you have, there's nothing there for us. We have to, I should be able to, I pay taxes. I should be able to walk out of my house and maybe drive a couple of blocks or whatever to a restaurant.
That's it.
I should be able to do what, what the west side and everybody else, I should have that same privilege. You know, and you say that, you, you say that the, the crime, the crime is all over Enid. It's not just the east side. It's all over Enid now. It might abandon east side, but I think if we clean up the east side, if you bring back, give, give us some of this good stuff, Willow, Willow, or Willow, or all those lights and stuff. I thought that was beautiful. It looks really nice on the west side. And I'm like, what's that? How come the east side ain't have something like that? Half the time, they don't even have lights. I mean, at night time, the lights are gone, it's just dark. And if you pump up all this crime, I mean, if you've got vacant houses, if you've got nothing for them to do, it's going to be crime. They don't have nothing else to do. Even our, even places, I mean, places to go for our youth, not only for our youth, but our young, our young people too. Why can't we have an advanced sim? Why can't we have an incredible pizza? I believe that Enid is big enough. We've got Vance Air Force Base, we've got all these surrounding towns that were closer to Oklahoma City, were closer to Tulsa, you know, that they did, I mean, I, I just don't understand. But my main concern was the ghetto, and why are our foreboders, because that's just one in Enid anyway, our foreboders of Enid, the foreboders of Enid, why do, why is the east side being left out of everything?
Man, but a few houses and escaped things. Now, I, I, I believe the east side, my entire life inception of underdirect, I, I grew up in the east side, I was born on the east side of town. It's literally the only thing.
It's not the ghetto.
It, I'm sure it's not. I would take this side of town over any other place in town, we have all the interesting things. The, the problem with, with the kind of investment you're talking about, the, the retail investments, the, the problem with that is, it's a tough sell. And, and we, as the city, we have this like, we have so many letters to pull.
But we clean it up.
And, and so we're trying that. So Broadway, that, that stretch of Broadway that Gerald Finch lived, go from downtown, not 530, but all the way to Pampas.
Thank you.
That took a huge amount of money to replace at first that entire water line, and then resurface that entire road, and we put trails that entire line. And part of what we're doing, as we do that along the main parts of Enid, is, you know, one, it's better, it cleans it up. It makes it a whole lot more likely that somebody's going to go invest their own money here. But it also means that we can, we can see off that. Those water lines are fire. So in all throughout the east side of Enid, we have a fire flow problem. So the water lines flying all over Enid have, um, you know, you can only get so much water from some of these areas. And the older pipelines, we can't cut as much water. So as we go through, we do these big expensive pieces of this, those big infrastructure investments. We open up opportunities. So now, if somebody wants to go build over near Broadway, just as an example, not the only place, but as an example. Okay, we've got water, great, we've got straight streets, great, we've got trailers, great. But what we don't have is, um, that, we've got to have somebody to spend their own money here. We have to have people in the community investing on the east side of town. So we can do a lot, the city of Enid, we can do a lot. But even when we do the biggest economic development stuff we do, you know, incentivize retail, we're largely the star. We have somebody who comes to us and says, "I want to spend several million dollars in the academy courts here. If you'll give me a rebate, we're going to collect a bunch of sales tax, will you give some of that?" We'll say, "Great, come, come build the academy." But what we can't seem to do unless we want to dramatically change how much money we're spending on economic development, is say, "You, you go build this here, on the east side, I do have to build this here." We've got to get people interested. So what you can do, everybody can do, for the east side of Enid, is make it clear, tell everybody in the community, beg people, come spend money on the east side of town. We, we have population density, we have people, you're right, everything you said is accurate. But we still got to have somebody come spend some money there, that's a tough second. But it's, the attitude is everything. Be, be proud of Enid, be proud of the east side of Enid, it's not a ghetto. It's beautiful, and that, kind of being proud of it, there's only so much we can do, but that's a big thing everybody needs to do.
I understand, I'm, I'm, I understand if I understand that side, west side, they keep putting that side, but if you keep building up one side, that's all people see this side being beautiful, and that one's yucky, no one's going to build it up because you're not trying, trying to put it there. So you all are going to have to help us put it there, because we can't do it ourselves.
Well, the most impressive thing we've done is infill that, along with the horse.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's closer to the middle of towns.
No, we still have east sides still.
Oh, no, I, I, I know what you mean.
Because you're saying Broadway. Broadway is hidden. Broadway is hidden. Because you come down the old K, Gary?
Yeah.
They can see Broadway from there. So when people come to go for home and come to Enid, they still see the east side that looks, mm. Anyone who come to Enid, and they can say, this is like, they said ago, that word's in for me. I taught my niece two times, she was a ghetto, just words someone created. Don't let anyone ever define me by the word ghetto. So when they say ghetto, we throw it out. And that's what people see, but that's how they, uh, put, label that side of town. And because you building up this side of town, what's going to happen over here? Not a doggone thing.
Well, that's what's happening. But, but give us a little bit of credit, we, we could, we asked them to give, we, we had developers coming to us.
We see what's happening, they're just going to give, that's why they do come to you. So that means your, that's your responsibility to help this side of town, for your commission. Just like I'm a retired teacher, I have students, no matter what side of town they come to, they're my responsibility.
I get it.
Build up their courage, or build them up, no matter where they come from, they share responsibility also.
The, the, the brief story I just want to tell you, we had folks, several years ago, we had, when we were starting the development at the Home of Court, when we started looking at that, when we're looking at the academy, and we're looking at all this retail, when it was, we were going a little bit hotter. We had folks who wanted to come build further out west, on the other side of Walhalla. We had folks who wanted to come build way the hell up. And, and we, as the commission, pushed really hard and voted a lot of our resources towards what's called infill development. And, and I know it's not as far east, it's not as far east as I want it to be. But I assure you that getting that 20 acres developed at Cleveland here, that was a lift. That took some effort, and it's, it's not as far east as I want it, it's not as far east as you want it, but I promise you it's better than the other side of Walhalla.
At least they have to drive 12, 13 miles.
Well, that marginal improvement's sometimes the best we can do. So we can push it a little bit, but we can't do everything. But we can push it in a direction.
Where does Tri-State come back up? I miss Tri-State.
No, not it, I, I got done. We had another question about development in Woodville Street, is John Glaze, did we answer your question already? Or do you need to ask another question for us?
Mayor or Commissioner? I just, something that our coffee group, we're a large coffee group, and then gets expanded to other people who discuss this. There's one who, um, over the years, our population's basically remained the same. I kind of looked at, 1970 was 44,000, now it's 49. Um, and we have three railheads, and a lot of cities have that. And, um, I know, speaking to the master of the commission, commission members, and members of the government, of the city government, they told me about the Home of Court industry and all that. And I, I, from the citizen's side, I want to understand, overall, really, there's no new industry as far as corporations. Uh, we have, at Pampas, it's came from Enid, now it's Tyson. And I know there's other things I'm not thinking of. However, overall, large industry, um, why, if, if, if we're going to have money here, taxes, tax dollars to build our pipeline, fix whatever people want, uh, we need tax dollars. And that's only going to come from residents who work and know what to do. That really is bringing in the importance. We have flat land, plenty of land, from miles and miles around. We have no rocks, no mountains, easy to build and dig. Um, we have three railheads, which a lot of the largest cities in the United States don't have three railheads. And, uh, so my question would be for, not to be overly critical, but just put it out there for some discussion with the citizens is, why in general has this not changed overall? And, uh, what can we do, what can be done to bring in more large industry? I know a lot of people want to keep this like a quiet community, but we can't. It's a stagnant pool, no water flowing in, no water flowing out, then it just gets stagnant and everything dies. So if you're not living and growing, then you're dying. So my, my subject would, would be how do we bring that in so that the pool gets bigger, everyone benefits more, and everybody can afford all these projects? And, uh, we have a greater quality of life, everything ties into that. Um, I'm just believing that.
I'll, I'll jump on that quickly in a minute. So, um, one of the things, y'all want to talk about that, Mike, because it's not really working either. So the thing about economic development, uh, we've looked at economic, I've been on the economic development board for a little over a year now, and it's one of those things that I was looking forward to being a part of. And I was interested in the very same thing that you're talking about, because when we start talking about investment into our community, helping our roads and things like that, it helps by bringing in better jobs and, you know, and more industry into the area. And so what we looked at is that, in terms of investment, what it costs in order to be able to bring another new corporation from outside of this community and then bring it here, it's an absorbent amount of time and effort going through these pools and these processes, which we still do, when we start to make an evaluation decision. Is it better for us to invest our money into businesses that have all, that are already here and that have already invested into this community? And to help them grow and to be able to expand and to bring more jobs, is it better for us to invest in that? Or are we going to spend the abundance of the resource, or not the abundance, but what resources we do have chasing after companies that are choosing between 150 communities that look exactly like Enid? Because there are some, some corporations here, and entities here, that have already made a decision that Enid is where they want to be. And so we made a, a decision, not to completely block out all those other corporations that want to be here, but to make sure that we look at corporations that are in Enid and look at them first and say, "What can we do in order to be able to help and support them and to help them expand?" So I agree with you, we do need to, to go, to go at them, but we don't need to do it at the expense of the corporations that are here. So like the success story you mentioned, Advance, that's now Tyson, that's, that's homegrown. We, we watched it grow here in this community into something really, really big. We're looking for things like that that we can do. We're looking in, in aviation, we've got some, um, are you familiar with our, uh, remind me, the, 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 uh, the growth center that we do over there? The incubator, we've got an incubator where small businesses can go in, we can invest in them and help them get connected so they can grow into something that is, that is bigger than it is. And so we, 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 we believe in homegrowing and investing in businesses, and that's a change of philosophy from a few, a few years back, where we decided it's more important that we do that than chasing after those big, those big corporations, if that, if that makes sense for you.
It does. I just want to bring it out to a lot of the more people that I know personally, in different groups and different areas. I hear them talking about it. And they do have questions about all the land available, east side, east side building. Yet, for larger growth, we do need large industry.
Agreed.
We're this year, bring in somewhere else.
That's very true. We, we've got some, in the industrial district, we've got some properties that we prep and we bring in. When opportunity presents itself, or we seek out opportunities in order to be able to pitch those properties and say, "Hey, look, come here, come do business in Enid." And we've had some recently, they're, they're not, you know, 5,000 employees, but they're 150 here, 200 here, 300 here. And so we've got some of those that are bidding, and are on their way here now. And so, it's happening, but it's, you know, we haven't hit that home run of 5,000, you know, people yet, but who's to say?
I guess there are plenty of them, what, what you're doing with that.
Appreciate it.
Our, our businesses here are all sort of.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think we've allowed to set ourselves off for success. A lot of that is the building, the industrial park that, uh, that Commissioner Wardell was talking about. Uh, other things that I think we've learned, the improvements, the airport. Yeah, they have a big Air Force Base, but you know what? They also have a lot of other industries that are looking, uh, a lot of industries don't work themselves. They can't, when the corporate jet. Well, we predict that a lot of the businesses are starting to happen. In fact, one of the ones in the incubators is, uh, that they do internal components for aircraft.
I'm sorry, our sound system's, uh, inherently having problems.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, but I think we have set ourselves off for success. Uh, we had the railways here for a long time, but I think we've made other improvements to do.
Definitely. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, next question, conveniently from, from Ron Jansen, who's left the room. What is the downtown hotel moment complete?
That's a very good question. Again, just like the question, calling pipeline, I don't think they have an answer to that. I do wonder, what I did, developer, then is doing that project? And so I'll just speak for just a moment on that. Um, what, what are the challenges? Commissioner Zil was talking about, he's trying to answer somebody about a question about, "Why doesn't it spend nowhere where we want it to go?" It's because in this country, we, we, we allow the free market to determine those kind of things. There was a termination made by leadership in the previous councils of a long-term vision that goes back for decades about that we need a downtown hotel to go in downtown area. Well, we couldn't get anybody to do it. And that's the answer, we tried to watch, as you well know, folks that have lived here and watched, and it never stood workout for whatever reason. Uh, with the third effort with the developer, uh, who has wonderful intentions and has other hotels in town, including Way Out West, uh, he took on the project. Uh, I think there's been some problems, I don't know if they've always said the problem, but I know that we're going to have him, it's not a boy, um, talk to us. I'll tell you that, you know, it is kind of funny, but, uh, but, but, but it's the project developer that stood up the project. The city has grown into a citizen's free land, uh, we wouldn't give that to anybody. So, uh, we anticipate that the project will be complete sometime this year, but I can't tell you.
Can't say. All right, next question, "Why is the mayor election held on a date that guarantees a low voter turnout? Why not have a coincide with November elections?" I've been given the answer that our state attorney says, "It's part of our city charter and part of state law that says or dictates what makes that that election is to be held." So there's that. The next person to sign up is Bobby Donaldson, wants to speak about a health collaborative.
I know that at least four of these seven people see your faces, so I'm going to tell you, because I love you. Look at five minutes and tell me, and I'll quit, you're so excited, I'm sure. Yes, we know, and I, okay. My name's Bobby Donaldson. I was born in St. Grace Hospital 74 years ago this year. I have always lived here, my family's in the Landmark House, my children, my grandchildren live here. I have some couple things I've got to wait until, maybe not get two minutes, because I have this city of old. But I want to tell you about the Health Collaborative, if you don't know. Do, do any of you know about the Enid Collaborative, uh, I'm a volunteer for this. We're just a group, and we're a volunteer group, we meet at 8:30 in the morning, the second Tuesday of every month at the Fire Department. We're the hospitals, I am, I married to the guest on theater, God who loves him, but I am the old nursing home lady, for most of you who know me, I've been 57 years in long-term care. I love it, it's all I know, it's my passion. But this collaborative is made up of representatives from the both hospitals, uh, the hospices, uh, those of us who work with the Mercy House, or the Free Clinic, or the Bay Red, or Loves and Fishes. We're just people looking to take care, um, if, if, if someone by you fell in your yard and they're homeless, and you call the ambulance, and they take them to the hospital. If they're elderly and can't go home, they can call me and I'll come. And we'll help figure out what they're going to do. If they can't go home, but their leg's broke and they have no health insurance, we now have a DME closet, I can get them a wheelchair or a, you know. And these are our men and women who even were getting up 8:30, and I keep saying that over and over, because I'm retiring, I really want my 8:30 to work. Uh, John, talk to us about the measure program. John, talk to us about the mentor program. And it just, we're just people who are trying to come once a month and say, you know, if God says, who will know, where the people will send me, send me. And so I just wanted you to know as a group and especially you guys, that the collaborative is there. You can call any of us, you can call Sister Anna Bass or Jamie Saints or me or anybody. Janet Corville, Lisa Senior Life. And some of us, if you have someone who has a health issue, whether it's a newborn baby or an end-of-life person, and they don't have some other resource, this town is not your problem. We have that partially because of everything you've done for us. Okay, I did pretty good. And I just quickly want to say, someone here tonight called my dear friend's child a name. I appreciate that so much, so you can invite me. I'm sorry, if you want to come after somebody's kid, I'm an old mother. I'm a bigger guy, would I cheer you up? Also, I was born in Eden. My grandparents are buried here, my parents are buried here, my children, my grandchildren live here. If you have a friend who thinks we're stupid, you need to get better friends. If you live on the east side and your sidewalk's broke, excuse me, I live in Cedar Ridge, how did you get a sidewalk? I, I just want to say that I heard, I heard a lot of good things here tonight. I also heard some kind of whiny stuff. So if you live here and this is your home, get behind it. Guys, come on, you know, I'm the old mother, I'm pretty fearless. I mean, in my age, in my life, I'm married 50 years, all my kids are healthy, all my grandparents are healthy. I'm retired, what you coming to me? But you guys, to do this, even if it paid a lot, I'd say, oh my gosh, bless your hearts. But the health collaborative is there. If you want to know more about it, contact me, Joan Cofield, about it, contact Eden Hospital, the Free Clinic, Mercy House, all those other programs we do. We have that foundation. Thanks for your time.
And thank you very much for what you do. You know, one of the things that makes Eden special is organization just like yours. People that don't sit around and waiting for somebody else to do something, they pick it up themselves. And you're a good example. We have a couple of good examples that we're talking about today. So thank you for what you do every day.
Our next question. Could the city do more to promote more use of the trail system? Multipurpose, fitness, shopping, going to, from work to school.
How's our math come along here? I know we're working on an updated link, finally connecting the high schools to the trail downtown and math and they have assigned it. I know that's all in this budget. I know it is.
We've got some work to do. We've got some work to do. And then I would ask you, who asked that question? Do you mind? Because we need volunteers in the city. So if you want to lead, we'll do it around the way you see it. Derek will put you on TV and help promote, not TV, the internet. To promote walking. We'll also do what the commissioners have been talking about, talking about putting a map together. But certainly whoever asked that question, you know, please help us, help us lead on that. And that's what I'm saying.
But it is in the budget.
I don't know if the map for the city puts it in the budget, but I know that the map does cost.
I mean, our trail link to connect where Dan is, like a high school to downtown, we're, we're doing all that this year.
We're working on this one. We're going to be working on this one.
Possibly working that this year.
Yes.
We have a lot of costs.
Yes. You know what? Let me go ahead and say this to you, just briefly. We have a lot of things to work on. Absolutely, a lot of things to work on. And so we will continue to work on those. What the commission helps us to do is prioritize those. It would be a pleasure and good for your benefit. So, thank you.
Those budget meetings are open meetings by the way. So if you have questions or concerns about what's going on, what we're spending money on, that's a great meeting to show that and pay attention to what the money is. And if you, it's, it's open for comments at the end. So if there's something that you object to or you think isn't being spent the right way, that's the perfect time to make comments. I, I'd love to see y'all there.
When is that meeting?
That's going to be, we're looking at April or May for the, for the budget meeting.
The very next meeting, we're going to have a recent budget calendar. So it will help us.
We'll be ending with your coffee.
One moment ahead, mention about the east side of Eden, as well as the west side of Eden, development. I would like for everyone to pay attention when you go down, pointy area. You notice, oh, about 8 o'clock PM, the till of morning, the hotel, I don't know the name of it.
Kansas County.
County. That hotel has more. People that stay in the hotel, any hotel, in Eden. That hotel right there has more people that stay in that hotel than any other hotel is occupied in Eden. Secondly, on the east side, in Eden. That's what I'm saying. And I want to point out, security in Eden. We have a budget for police officers to be hired. The problem is, we don't have people that qualify. I know this because I've asked, why is it that we don't have the security that we need? It's not that we don't want the officers to be able to secure our town. The applicants, they have to go through a regimen of qualifications. But they don't qualify. They get so far into the hiring process and they're disqualified. They're not being disrenewed again. So I want you all to know, it's not that we ignore and act like we're, we have a blind eye to the situation because we know that we need more officers. And they need to be paid well. As far as in Eden with our park department, they need to be paid well. But I want you all to know, the qualifications, a lot of them do not meet the criteria.
Back to the trails question. There is another mile and a half of trails that hasn't been planned and we have applied for grants for that, so we're waiting on funding for that. Next question. What can the city do to encourage policies and personal actions to promote recycling?
The city offers a program for recycling. We have a recycle center currently located over on Ren. It is a program where people can take cans.
Cardboard.
Cardboard, plastic. If we're talking about curbside recycling, those that have lived here a long time like I have will remember back in the 90s when the city didn't have a curbside recycling program. The curbside recycling program was discontinued lightly because of cost or likely because of inefficiency as well in program. So is it a program that it sounds like maybe we should, should consider? It sounds like we're getting a whole lot of input, things to consider tonight. And so one of the jobs of the commission is to take all the input and prioritize it. So, quick question.
Next question. Why can't residents get the same building code exemptions enjoyed by the Broadway Tower block?
Hey, look, Broadway Tower is certainly a problem. And I know that the code is to look at and others have issues with the guy that owns the building. The guy that owns that building has been before this city commission just a few years ago. Just a few years, years ago. Talking about the planning, had to make a boutique hotel out of it. The commission has to take the best information, have the time to, to help support people. It's pretty clear he's not been able to do that. So if there's code violations there, please report it, get rid of it right here. So he'll have to, to take a look at that building.
All right, Mr. John Glaze had a question about the new director of the Eden Airport.
Actually, something good to say about the Eden government is that the new director, Debra Curry, I heard we're going to have a new director of airport. After so many years of having the, the same one who knows everyone and knows how things work, I was wondering how this is going to work out? And I bought this super room to be a table where they had the time. So after she was hired, I actually went to a couple of meetings. A board advisory meeting. And I went to a planning meeting for the flying in that I don't have. And young eagles, you know, where they train. Give some training and simulators to young animators because we have a deficiency in pilots in the United States. And so after watching her work with, with, with board and with the people in the planning meetings, she's asking me the right questions, she knows her business. I found out that there was a list of things that, training that a director would have to have over the years. Every, every year go to a different kind of training to be up on all the standards and properly trained for, for instance, airport safety. There's a whole list of other things. And turns out she already had all that current training for the airport. She's saving Eden money right off the bat. It's our life. We all have been talking about saving money and it's going to be progress. So listening in on the meetings, I've noticed that she's working with every way to not just break even or trying to not lose money. She's trying to make money and she's already working that out. And we need money. So they, Booker Airport, she's trying to make it to a money-making thing for the city of Eden. She doesn't need money. And seems like she wanted to make it a happy place to bring corporate people in, corporate people out, bring flyers in, make it like a punk city at airport possible where it's a real happy, vital part of that, of that community. A lot of people in Eden don't know that we have airport. And so the more events they have out there, it's going to be a more vital thing. So she's working publicly, publicly. And I found all this out after getting to know her and then going to the meetings, saw her coffee. And so I started asking questions and I am, I am a critical person. I don't just leave anything on the bad on the street. And so I don't want to mention hiring her because she is doing this in Eden a great service and I'm pleased with what we're, what we're paying for. So good to know she's not here. Thanks.
Yeah, I totally agree. She has brought a breath of fresh air, I think, to the airport. She's come up with some new ideas. That's not to say the previous airport manager didn't do a lot because of the other all the improvements there, he didn't go very well. But I like some of the being lady friendly things that she's doing. I don't know if it's her or not, but the Easter bunnies could be arriving by airplane here pretty quick. She's got a lot of fun things that are going on at the airport that are relatively new. So I'm, I'm pretty excited about that too. So thanks for your comments.
All right. One of the next questions has to do with, with our holiday in the park that we've recently put on. This has been a great effort between the community and the city in Eden to, to bring Christmas event to Meadow Lake Park. And it's been very successful. But the question here is, why not do something similar to this as well that government springs?
It's good. I can't, I have no reason why not to do. I, I think it's something I will look into and see, see what we can do as far as planning the budget, looking at the parks, parks, see what we can put together. Definitely exploring.
I just have a question. How did you, how did they come to the determination of Meadow Lake versus Government Springs?
I don't think it was a versus type situation. I think it was just.
How did they just pick Meadow Lake, just put them all in a basket and drew names and this?
I'm going to answer that, Commissioner, to the landing. Please, the city tried to do something good. I'll just, I'll just be frank with you. And this is, this is kind of what it feels like, trying to do something good in Meadow Lake, which is giving a central location in town. We weren't thinking about east, west and all that. In fact, it probably wouldn't, it wouldn't happen to just me anywhere simply because, not because I don't like Christmas and celebrate Christmas, it's because the leadership, that guy out there, Everglenn, Public Horse Director, a lot of people do poorly now, the older right here from Parks. And so could we look at Government Springs? Absolutely, folks, absolutely. But what's not looking at is, what you do over here, what you do compete with. Because this is before we get into that. I'll tell you, we spent a lot of time in Meadow Lake for everybody, everybody in this city. East side, west side, everywhere. And so in fairness, I'm listening to all this, I'm going to continue to listen to all this and, and, but maybe we can answer this question. Because here's something about Christmas, Christmas. And we want to be criticized here at the city because we didn't put it in Government Springs or Crossland or, or Meadows Park. And while I'm in, let me go ahead and talk about this man right here who's humble, a War Two Commissioner. And some stuff that I've heard about around doing lights somewhere. You know what? There's lights all over the place. OG and E's actually, I don't know if they're still here, but they're putting them all over town. And there's going to be some actually in War Two of southern lights because of the efforts of that man right there. I actually want to say, for everybody talking about cleanup, the area that is seeing the most emphasis of cleanup that I can tell you from city staff is War Two in Southern Heights. But I, I'm not listening. I can only take so much about we're not cleanup stuff, we're not cleanup stuff. There's piles of brush over there right now. But we're going to go back and pick those up. And we're going to continue to support that effort. And then we're going to start supporting the effort at War Three and, and keep going. So am I a little passionate? Yes, I am. So I'm showing you, the city manager has a little passion too. But when we talk about Christmas and trying to do something nice in Meadow Lake, could we look somewhere else? Yeah, we could. We sure could. Charlie's going to come down to mine because I'm going to need some more personnel.
And, and staff is a big one credit. We have just started doing these recreation programs. For years, the city's done track programs. They do programs that champion Jem now for three years, three years. And that's just started and it's, and they're growing. They are doing so much more than ever have. And it's awesome. It's all been received really well, it's been really well done. But it's not, you can't go from having no, none of that track program stuff to having everything. And so they are doing a lot more. In Government Springs, we did the, what's the, the cultural festival that the city.
Government Springs, we did Chickspring Car. We do, we do pride, cultural event. There's lots of events that happen.
So we can always do more. And so we've got staff, they're learning, they're doing more, they're doing a really good job. Give them credit. I hope we do more Government Springs. But we do more period.
In addition to the holiday at the park, Everglenn and the staff has also spent quite a bit of time, the Halloween event that happens at the general and the chess club, that is done very well as well. So thank you.
nerve wars is coming. There's, the Parks Department, Parks and Recreation are doing some. A, the pin projects, they're all three. They're in different places in town. And you just have to wake up and go cook. See the newspaper, it's on websites. It's a good deal. Free, not possible.
All right, Neil Norwood, are you still here? There she is. Are you back there? All right, you had, we want to talk about trainings.
We might want to cheers up here. Oh, no, I don't even have to freak out. Run up without trains. Several areas, I think it's Fourth Street, 10th Street, 16th Street, 30th Street and then, O and K, East on K. Oh my goodness. Randolph. Randolph. The trains will sit and sit and not move. You can read five books and try and still have a book. Now, if you're going to work at 8 o'clock, going to lunch at 12, trying to get off at 5, pick up your kids because they're going to charge an extra dollar for every minute that you're late. Oh my goodness. What can you do about the trains stopping and switching tracks at that time? At those crucial times?
They are hampered to no one.
No, really. No, no, don't get joking.
So, so many years ago, bringing in the airport, they actually had addressed some of that. And there's supposed to be a fine if you stay there for a certain amount of time.
And that, and that's very true, but the way in which it's done, it has to be tracked time and then recorded time. So the person who's sitting there at that, at the light, reading their book, clocking, and then you got to follow the report, but it's a state. and then you got to follow the report, it's a state, follow the state in order for them to be able to respond. Unfortunately, as municipal, you don't have any control over the rail. It's difficult. We can be an advocate, we can help, we can assist, but it's all the state process. So I agree with you. I think it's very, very difficult to deal with, but we can definitely assist. But it's a complaint that, you know, as the citizens made complaints and to report times, I was here from this time to this time, that's the mechanism that the state has agreed to with the rail in order to be able to recognize situations.
They were here for us, railroads here for the city. And Oklahoma, no joke, the railroad and everything fell. I mean, now you can see that, like, there are crazy rules for the railroad and the railway system.
I will say that's a good question. I just, the only reason I had any things because the Union Pacific rep from Missouri was in my office that day. And they were kind enough to call me and stop by, yeah, what are our issues? And I knew that you would mention that tonight, so I mentioned it. One of our issues is your trains. VNSF are backing us up because all of it, we, all of us are inconvenienced by that. I don't know if there's much we can do other than what the commission said, but I did ask them on him. And then I'll also talk about a couple other things. I know that sometimes road construction, they're the last ones. Railroad and ATT come over here. But, so I asked them for some help, I asked them to have a contact area. And the other thing is, I thought you might talk about, somebody might talk about quiet zones. Quiet zones are something that if the commission wants to take that up, we can. Quiet zones are going to be expensive. Just ballpark stuff, listening to him play the quarterway off, because you have to make a crossing in passport. Because believe it or not, not everybody's going to stand there or stop and wait. Some people sadly go around. So that's part of what the quiet zone stuff is. And he gave me some, some kids books. Said, John, when I go to a kid like that, for now this Friday, I'm going to take all those kids books. And when I'm talking to Javoris, we're going to talk about trains and train safety. So, you know.
Can I ask one question about trains, really, really quickly? Because it's something I'm trying to get my head around. And this might kind of be rhetorical. Why are we not being considered as a hub for one of the fast trains? And the reason I'm asking that is, it'll go everywhere else but here, and we actually have more than three bulkheads. I think we have five. And so what that might allow for would be those individuals who want to work in Oklahoma City, which that ride would be 45 minutes. I come from an area in the country where 45 minutes is the average commute time. So those people that are working in Oklahoma City that can travel via the fast trains, they'll be making more money than they would here. And so that means their ability to pay more taxes for infrastructure would be there. I think, I heard someone say something to the effect of, well, if we had something like that here, because of our homeless population, if we were to build a rail station for that, then there would be a lot of people maybe trying to get more. Well, we have a lot of partnering agencies in the United Way that helps with homeless people and presently sheltered. So for me, definitely it's not going to fly. So, but I, you know, if it hasn't been considered, I think it should be considered. And if there's like pushback from it, wherever you disseminate this information or the public domain, that should be there and then I think it should just be discussed. Because I think that could be very beneficial in terms of creating excess revenue for the city of Eden.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Next question, can you get us a stoplight of Leo Mitchell and O and K?
My concern is the amount of time that it takes that light to change. When we, when I come to that light, I can't deny, one time I sat for seven minutes, I got out my car and waited, pushed the button for the walk front, so that the light would change. There's a problem with that light stays so long, and I just want to know, is there anything that we can do about that?
Our next person is in the room right here. He's written that down, he's got committed to memory, he'll definitely look into it.
I'm calling, you can. I'll get called out here.
Miss Lenita, last card's yours. You had something written down, the criminal justice reform, Johnson.
Oh, yeah. Before I go to criminal justice for my chief of police and the assistant chief of police, when I have to sit at that light that they were talking about, is it okay if no captain is on? I've gone about it so many times. I can't, uh, chief of police.
Right turn, I go red light.
I have to get back to the light. I've gone about it so many times, I'm afraid. Man, do I have to, can I do, go ahead and make that back. Not around. Oh, Lord, don't look. Okay. Oh, man, thank you for that. The question that I was having was the, with the criminal justice reform and so many inmates are having early release, they have nowhere to go. They have, they can't get hired, especially if they had a violent crime or maybe they popped somebody across the head and showed anger on their record. And most of us just never, you know, it might have popped somebody, got over it, but they can't get a job and there's no help. That has really been a hard thing for me. When I see these young men and young women getting out of jail and they have nowhere to go. No home, no job, can't get a job. So that's something to me that we really need to look at so that they don't end up becoming repeat offenders. So we can, you know, whatever we can do, I know churches have, will do what they can, but they're going so far. The churches can go Salvation Army, they're doing what they can for God's ministry. I think Salvation Army only keeps them for a short amount of time. And then you got to go and hit the street. So if it's cold, they might go still, see, it can't even be warm. So we have to come up with something as a community. I know Oklahoma City, they're developing different programs. And this is just a thought that maybe you could put on your agenda that we can do as a city, you know, that we can have compassion.
I just like to say that at Workforce Oklahoma in CBSA Building, there is a list of employers in Garco County that employ people with a felony record. You can find out, and it's a long list, it's at least three dozen. There's also a person at Workforce Oklahoma that deals directly with making these resumes because we see these people, of course, we got to, we try to, so. But at Workforce Oklahoma down in the CBSA Building, they'll print it off for you and it tells you everyone in Garco County, because like in healthcare, you know, we're barred from working for certain reasons.
So if you didn't hear that, Workforce Oklahoma, CBSA Building has an extensive list, and they will help you get your resume together and show you that.
Yeah, they'll make it, print out copies for you, that would have your...
All right, we're done with our cards. Is there anyone else that has a comment to make tonight?
Was that a yellow card?
That's it?
We ran out of cards.
All right, and the yellow, if you would approach the microphone.
I have a mission to her and I was doing the, but there's something I want to make say on make. I am a truck driver here in Fairmont, Texas, Mexico. So for the next town hall meeting, there way you can find out what the deaf population here in Eden is, and then have, there's enough, someone go around and let them know that there will be a town hall meeting if you are interested in coming to it. Because so you have to get a truck driver to be here for them, but I think it's important for the deaf community also to be a part of this meeting.
That's good, thank you. Very good.
Are there any other questions?
I have one. I live out in Fairmont and I go down South Gate, I always want to go to work. Is there any way that road can be fixed?
Is that going to be a county road from Fairmont to Gary?
Well, I go down Fairmont, well, I don't go to the South Gate to get to my work down there, but that's our place. When it rains, it's kind of dipped on the sides, and when you drive down that road, you grew the hydro plant, you know, because I almost did twice. And I just wanted to get it fixed.
That's not a city limit, so that will be your county commissioner that you need to be.
What we'll do is we'll pass it off to the county. That'll be, we're real good at that. We're real good. And then we'll see how good the county is today.
Because when I hydro plant, I had my daughter with me and it scared me to death.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. Approach the mic, please.
I've been watching on the news and they're talking about these water systems, water lines in Oklahoma, that they're in bad shape and they need to be replaced. And I'm wondering about it. Or are we in that category with them, or are we updated, or how are we treating this situation of the water line?
Giving the, like, water lines to towns, the water to houses and stuff, we actually have...
And the whole water system itself.
Yeah, actually, Gerald, we have a program, don't we, where we, I think maybe not this last year, but the one before, where we did some spot testing of our water system within town, projecting for lead levels and...
We're still doing that.
We do testing, we do testing all the time.
Yeah, so I think that's, I was talking about that too, but I think we actually have an ongoing program to make sure that we don't have lead problems in water lines.
It's on the CCR report, we do testing every year, we do for lead copper. We're also starting a program where we're testing wastewater that's coming out of the houses because we're only responsible for our two meters, but we're looking to see what we can find in the wastewater flow, along with after it's gone through the house, see if you see any high areas that we can do some notifications.
That's the city water.
That's the city water. That's on our infrastructure on the east side and the west side.
Now, is that different from the state that's out there?
We do all the testing here in town. We send our information to the state and then they look at it, make sure we're compliant, and then they send it back to the citizens.
We don't buy the waters in the state of Oklahoma. Like, all the whole water infrastructure is city. All right, are there any final questions tonight? Thank you all. Thank you.